Good evening, and I apologize for the delay. Welcome to the August 12th meeting of the Governing Body. I will call this meeting to order. If you will give your attention to Councilman Dobler, who will provide the invocation, stand as you are able, and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. This will be my last month to do, to find people to do invocations. Pastor Frazier has always been gracious to come and do this. He always has great words of wisdom. We all know Pastor Frazier. He serves a multicultural congregation at New Hope and Love Community Church in Topeka. And he is on, he is involved in so many things. I'm not going to read them all, but he is Vice Chair of the Center for Peace and Justice, just a number of things. And he's also, very importantly, a chaplain for the Topeka Police Department. We appreciate that. Carl is retired from 35 years at the Department of Ag in the financial arena. He has been, he is a member of a number of prestigious associations. And most importantly, he is married to Lenessa Frazier. They have three lovely children and two wonderful grandchildren. And by the way, Pastor and his wife are here today. This is their anniversary. We appreciate you taking a few minutes.
Thank you. We are celebrating 36 years. Praise the Lord. Thank you. Let us pray. By our heads, Almighty God, we are thanks for this opportunity to together and serve our community. Lord, we just thank you, Lord, for each council member here today, Lord, and their family. Bless them and touch them, Lord, from their head to their toe. Give them wisdom and all the decisions making they need to make for this great meeting today, Lord. Lord, we just ask you to guide them as they look at, deliberate the important matters before you and for the people today, Lord. Grant them wisdom, clarity in thoughts, and spirit of unity as they work together for the common good. May their decision be guided by your wisdom, and may they be blessed to all of the who have called on our city as home. We ask you to continue to bless upon our city, all the citizens, from the north side to the east side, from the west side, all over, Lord. We just ask you to bless everyone, and these are other blessings. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, united, God, united in its soul, with liberty and justice and tolerance. Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Mayor Padilla.
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Here.
Valdivia Akla.
Here.
Ortiz.
Here.
Banks.
Here.
Cal.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Dobler.
Here.
Duncan.
Here.
And.
Here.
All right, we have 10 present.
Okay. Next on the agenda are appointments. Madam Clerk.
A is a board appointment recommending the appointment of Shelley Ramos to the Civil Service Commission to fill an unexpired term ending March 14, 2027. B is an advisory council reappointment of Robert Nugent to the City of Topeka Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA Advisory Council, for a term ending August 10, 2027.
Okay. You heard the appointments as announced. Is there a motion from the body? Okay. Motion to approve by Councilwoman Valdivia Akla, second by Councilwoman Ortiz. We're ready to vote.
Okay. We have 10 yes. The motion carries.
Good. Thank you. Agenda item three, presentations. Madam Clerk. Oh, I'm sorry. I did make an error because typically I'll recognize those persons, especially if they're in the audience, but in this case, they are not. But still, in their absence, would you give them a round of applause for stepping forward and serving the sitting there? Okay. Now, Madam Clerk, Agenda item three.
Three is a presentation on the City of Topeka 2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor members of the Governing Body. Stacy Hammond, BTN Co. Audit Director, and Josh McInarney and team will be leading us through this discussion.
Good evening, Governing Body. Tonight, I have Stacy Hammond and Trey Shelton with me. They're from BTN Co. They are the ones who do our financial audit for the year. Our annual comprehensive financial report is basically a report card of where we ended 2024 in terms of revenue and expenses across our various funds. It's a long and lengthy document, over 160 pages. It is online, but we also have it in a condensed version known as our PAFR, to where it's, that's only like a 10-page document, and that goes over the highlights of the year. I'll keep it brief, so I'll turn it over to Stacy and Trey to kind of go over the details of our audit.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Stacy Hammond, and I'm the partner on the city's financial statement audit. And with me tonight is Trey Shelton, the manager on the audit. All of you have received three documents from us. One of them is a copy of the audited financial statements, also a single audit of federal expenditures report, and finally, a report that's addressed to the mayor and members of the city council. I'm going to be presenting the financial statement side, and then Trey will talk single audit, but our financial statement summary is really presented in that report that's addressed to the mayor and city council. And there are several items that it requires us to communicate about related to the audit, about our responsibilities in performing the audit, the significant accounting policies and practices that management has, and finally, to present our observations about the overall audit process. The first thing I need to visit with you about is our responsibilities in performing the city's financial statement audit. We did perform the city's audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, government auditing standards set forth by the Comptroller General of the United States, the provisions of the Single Audit Act, Uniform Guidance, the Office of Management and Budget Compliance Supplement, and requirements in the Kansas Municipal Audit and Accounting Guide. All of those standards together require us to perform procedures in order to obtain reasonable assurance about whether the city's financial statements are free from material misstatement. As far as the procedures that we performed, we did examine, on a test basis, evidence supporting the amounts of disclosures in the financial statements, and we also reviewed the accounting principles that management used, as significant accounting estimates, as well as evaluating the overall financial statement presentation. Probably the most important thing that we'll be telling you tonight is that, as a result of performing those procedures, we did determine that the financial statements of the city are presented fairly in all material respects in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Therefore, reissued what we call an unmodified audit opinion, which is the best kind of opinion that the city can receive. The second item that I need to discuss with you relates to the city's accounting policies used and practices, including significant accounting estimates. We're required to bring to your attention anything that we identified during our audit related to changes in existing accounting policies or newly adopted accounting policies. The city did adopt a new accounting standard during the year set forth by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. It was GASB statement number 101 titled "Compensated Absences." That standard updated the recognition and measurement guidance related to the city's recording of compensated absences. The city also has several significant estimates that are summarized in the summary of significant accounting estimates on pages six and seven of that report to the mayor and city council. And the city's significant estimates are the valuation of investments at fair value, accrued compensated absences, self-insurance reserves, the net pension liability resulting from the city's participation in CAPERS, and the total other post-employment benefit liabilities. Our responsibility as auditors is to make sure that the city has a reasonable process in place to measure and record each of those accounting estimates. And we do conclude on pages six and seven on that report to the mayor and city council that the city does have a reasonable process in place to measure and record each of those accounting estimates. The final item that I'd like to discuss with you this evening related to the financial statements is our observations about the audit process. This is where we would inform the city council and mayor if we'd had any disagreements with management or any significant issues or difficulties in performing the audit. I'm pleased to report that there is nothing in any of those areas that were required to report. The city was extremely cooperative throughout the entire audit process, and they were transparent in answering the numerous questions that we had. I'm going to turn it over to Trey now to discuss the single audit of federal expenditures.
Thank you, Stacy. As Stacy mentioned, I will be going over the single audits. The single audit was conducted in accordance with the same standards as the financial statement audit. The city's major federal programs for fiscal year 2024 included the Continuum of Care Program and the Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds Program. Those two programs together accounted for approximately 19.3 million of the total 24.6 million of federal award expenditures in 2024. For these programs, we audited the city's compliance with the compliance requirements described in the Office of Management and Budget Compliance Supplement. Now, ultimately, management is responsible for compliance with federal statutes, regulations, and the terms and conditions of their federal awards. Now, our responsibility as auditors is to express an opinion on that compliance related to those two major federal programs. As Stacy mentioned, this is going to be the most important thing. Based on our testing, we did issue an unmodified opinion on the single audit in respect to the CIFA and those two major federal programs in compliance. Now, on page nine of the single audit report, you will find the schedule of findings and question costs. This is where any findings that we noted throughout our testing are listed. There were three findings identified that we consider as significant deficiencies in relation to suspension and debarment, reporting, and subrecipient monitoring in the year for those compliance requirements. We did not identify, however, any deficiencies in internal control over compliance that we consider to be material weaknesses. All three of those findings were related to the Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds Program, and we are aware that the city has plans to resolve those findings in the future. Now, before I close and open for any questions, I just want to thank Josh and Ben and the rest of the finance department. You know, the audit is a long process, and it's a lot of pressure, and it takes a lot of work, and they were open and willing to answer any questions and requests we had through the entire process, so I want to thank them for all the hard work they did in helping us with the audit this year. And now I'll open it up to questions.
Thank you very much for the report. Governing Body, have any questions? Seeing none, again, thank you very much for the report. I appreciate you being here today. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening, everyone.
You, too. Okay. We'll move on to the Agenda item four, the consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
A is approval of a professional engineering contract between the City of Topeka and JEO Consulting Company Incorporated to provide engineering services, including survey and traffic and safety study for the design of sidewalk and share use path at the project location along Southwest 45th Street from Gage Boulevard to Cambridge Avenue. B is approval of a professional engineering contract between the City of Topeka and Alfred Vinisch &amp; Company for providing design and construction documents for street reconstruction, traffic signal replacement, stormwater improvements, water main replacement, and sanitary seener improvements on Southwest Topeka Boulevard from 29th Street to 37th Street. C is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert Perez granting ID Tech Telecom LLC a contract franchise to construct, operate, and maintain a telecommunications systems in the City of Topeka, Kansas. D is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Valdivia Akla granting Marisol Calerta an exception to the provisions of City of Topeka Code Section 945150 at seat concerning those provisions. E, our minutes of the regular meeting of July 15, 2025, and there are no applications.
We've heard the consent agenda as read. Is there a motion from the body? Motion to approve by Councilman Dobler, with a second from Councilman Duncan. We're ready to vote.
Councilmember Miller.
I apologize. My. Commission.
Okay, we have 10 yes. The motion carries.
Okay, thank you. For everyone here today, we see we have a very busy agenda, and see you have a large crowd that's here today. What I'd like to be able to do, and I don't think there'll be any objection from the bodies, I'm, as the Chair of the meeting, I'm going to move what is in the agenda as 5K, the ordinance Fair Lawn Acres Development Revision. Madam Clerk, if we could move that to 5A.
To consider next. We got it.
So that would be up first in our action items.
Correct.
If you will read 5K, please.
K is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert Perez amending the district map referred to made a part of the zoning ordinances by Section 1850050 of the Topeka Municipal Code. In order to amend the master plan unit development plan for Fair Lawn Acres Development C2 and M3 uses located at 605 Southwest Fair Lawn to increase the size of the allowable C2 commercial tract and rezone the parcel located at 601 Southwest Fair Lawn from C4 Commercial District in order to add this parcel to the PUD master plan for Fair Lawn Acres Development.
Thank you. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor members of the Governing Body. Dan Warner, Planning Director, and Ryan Freeman, our Director of Development and Planning, will lead us to this item.
Dan?
Thanks, City Manager. Mayor Governing Body, this PUD revision is back before you, so let me summarize some things where we're at currently. So just a reminder that this was a rezoning to increase the allowable C2 use area from what's existing already in that current zoning to 4.77 acres to also to include the repair shop on the corner. The PUD amendments necessary to allow that larger area of C2 for that convenience store. So let's run through some actions to date. So the Planning Commission reviewed this item, their original application on May 19th. They recommended approval at that time. Protest petitions were submitted, and that are, that were sufficient to require a three-quarters vote of the Governing Body to approve that original application. On July 1st, the Governing Body remanded back to the Planning Commission this particular item with instructions that were specific to some traffic issues, allow public comment on the item, and address three of the golden factors. So the Planning Commission considered this case again at their July 21st meeting. So staff reviewed with the Planning Commission the golden factors, those three golden factors. The consultant for the applicant reviewed with the Planning Commission the traffic items that were remanded back by the Governing Body, and then the Planning Commission heard public comment on the item as well. So after all of that, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the rezoning with the following changes: remove the truck scale, and remove the fuel pumps for semi-trucks. So that is the recommendation from the Planning Commission, and effectively makes the project now a convenience store with fueling islands for 10 cars. That's the result of the Planning Commission's action on that particular remand. So the item is back before you tonight. Be happy to try to answer any questions.
Any questions from the body? Councilwoman Valdivia Akla, then Councilwoman Hiller. That's all right.
Thanks for the reminder. I, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say this isn't so much a question as it is a comment. I, just in good conscience, I cannot support this. If anything, what really pushed me towards not supporting it more was the email that we received today, this afternoon, the formal objections to this that have 10 key reasons not to vote for it based on the traffic study itself. So I, I understand there's been a lot of, you know, back and forth, and I think everyone's trying to do the best they can, but this is just, I won't be able to support it. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. We've all had lots of questions and so on, but one really struck me this afternoon. I mean, this all was generated because we had an applicant who wanted to do a certain use with this property. Is that applicant still wanting to see a change?
I think what I can say is the applicant did not withdraw before this action tonight, so beyond that, I'm not exactly sure.
Is a change needed to provide the use that is, that the commission now recommends?
The rezoning was needed to accommodate the application that Maverick submitted.
Understood.
So Planning Commission changed and made a different recommendation to remove the trucks and the truck scale, so I'm not sure what the question is exactly.
So with that limitation on the use of the property, does it even need a zoning change anymore? That's my question.
Yes, because the, they didn't reduce the area, Councilwoman, they didn't reduce the area of the C2. The biggest reason for that zoning change was that C2, which is already part of the existing zoning, that area got bigger. Planning Commission did not address the size of that. They addressed the use, the trucks.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman Duncan.
This is my first question, and I guess they can because they did, and it's in front of us. But as I went back and watched that meeting again, I watched it the first time, and we watched it, I guess this is a recommendation that can be made to put very specific limitations on what they want to build, even if we approved the zoning? I mean, I guess that's my very broad legal question. It just seemed very, because there seemed to be even some confusion that evening at the meeting.
Under city code, you can use a PUD, Plan to Use Development, I believe is the acronym, to allow creative uses for a property under zoning that zoning itself would not allow without that specific change. In order for those to be legally valid, they do have to be reasonably related to the need and based off a rational purpose. Whether or not this ultimately would be found to be supported would just depend on what a court ultimately found. Any PUD has to be reasonably related to the need, and it's supposed to be so that this particular zoning by itself cannot accomplish what you want, so we've added additional restrictions.
Well, I guess my second comment slash question is, and this is really nobody's fault in the room, that this process itself gets frustrating at times because, once we approve these changes, nothing comes back to us. And part, that's our policy, part, that's state law, so I understand all that, and if there's a way we can ever look at some of that, we should. But the reason I point that out here is, if this moved forward with approval, this is not a binding decision, correct? Once we change the zoning, three years from now, the applicant could come back and say, "We did build the convenience store. Great, we applied, but now we're going to go ahead and apply to expand the station," and that wouldn't even come back to us at that point. That could be done, right, by staff review because we'd already made the zoning change?
If the PUD was let stand and was not challenged and was still on the property, if you wanted to later add semi-truck gas pumps, they would need to come in and ask for an amendment to that PUD which would follow this entire process. Now, you could use the property for any other purpose allowed under that zoning except this very specific exception.
Okay. And I guess that's my last question is, because I think there was some confusion with some of the language that came out of that. I know we got some emails. I know staff talked to some folks about whether that was actually in this, that that would have to happen as part of this process, or if it was actually required under this process.
Putting the trucks back into the proposal would require a rezoning, amending that PUD plan.
Okay. I'll just leave, my last comment is, my frustration here has been we sent this back with some concerns. The Planning Commission sort of skipped over a few of those concerns and then made some other changes, which I think have really complicated this, which, before, I think it was easier for us to say, "This isn't a good fit for this spot. Here's the reasons under those golden factors, some issues with the roads." I think this overcomplicated things to some degree, which is why I'm very hesitant tonight to push this forward because of how it's gotten even somewhat worse to some degree and a little more complicated than what we were presented with at first. So that's what I am struggling with here this evening, so thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Just so everyone understands on this, so there'll be no service for semi-trucks, correct?
Correct.
But that is still one of the truck routes we have in Topeka, so trucks can go up and down that road, so there is no confusion in the future about that.
For sure.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I took some time to go out there. I'm really concerned about the pedestrian safety, and it's not adequate. Kids start school today. Go out there tomorrow, their parents drop them off at the roller derby, the roller rink. They, they drop them off and they pick them up because that is a safe place for them to drop them off and pick them up. I even went across to the church. Somebody came out and asked if I was okay. Yeah, I was okay. I was just checking the, all the traffic flow. Because some of the kids that live on the east side of that street, they have to cross there at that stoplight, which is a very crazy stoplight because cars don't want to stop. They don't want to do the speed limit, and they don't want to stop, so I watched that. Then I, I drove down 7th Street, and there, there's no sidewalk for the kids, so they have to be pushed in the streets during the winter, and that's kind of terrible, too. Then I actually went in like I was a parent, and I went into Landon, and that is just crazy within itself, not, and you better not get mixed up with the bus drivers there. So I can't support this. I can't support this because this is going to make more traffic for those kids. And that area is just so congested right there. I feel like it's so congested. So for those, that, that's one of my reasons that I, that I looked at that. And I sat out there before and after school. I, I know last week, I won't, Neil talked about the stoplights within there, and that's, that's crazy, crazy within itself, from 6:00 to 10:00. A lot of kids are walking because they don't meet that two-mile criteria from the school because the buses, now they change that, 501 changed that. So we've got a lot of kids walking down Fair Lawn and walking across, so if you, I, I can't support this. I apologize. Thank you.
Question, Dan. I think Councilman Duncan kind of asked it. The Planning Commission's recommendation is with the removal of the, the trucks and, and the pump stations for?
For the semi-trucks. That's correct, Mayor.
Yeah, yeah. But what, I mean, is that a mandate to the company who wants this convenience, convenience store, truck station there? I mean, what's to hold them to that?
So, so I can try to answer that. So yes, certainly, this is, it's not their ideal outcome, right? This is, they, they made this proposal based upon having put into their numbers that they would have revenue off of the diesel fuel from the semi-trucks, but the way the ordinance reads, it, it clearly outlines everything but excluding scales, fuel pumps for semi-trucks and trailers, truck repair, overnight sleeping or resting areas for trucks and drivers. So that is specifically on the PUD. So if at any point in time we were to see that activity, all of this will come through. We still have site plan review, building permit process, so permits would be issued, and we would know that that work was happening, and we would not issue permits because it's not allowed on the site as this is stated in this ordinance.
Would another governing body would have to take it under advisement?
If they chose to, yeah, come back for an amendment.
Councilwoman Valdivia Akla.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a question and an add-on. When you say that there's not going to be any fueling islands for semis, right? But could there be something attached to when you go in and you see where regular cars could get filled up, and then as part of that same structure, they have a diesel add-on as well? Could semis then come up and fill on there?
The ordinance is specific about not allowing fueling for semis. The diesel that you can get to fill up a pickup that's often attached to the, the gas pumps is a different thing. It's not for the big rigs to pull in and get fuel.
Okay, just want a clarity because a constituent had asked me that. Okay, just want a clarity because a constituent had asked me that. But the other thing is, is that my daughter went to Landon for three years, and I don't know if folks understand unless they live in the area or their kids go to school in the area, just how bad traffic is in the morning and when school lets out. It is around, they go in this round, and a lot of times, there's not enough rooms for the buses or the cars, and then so you have them flowing out into the streets. And then, again, like Councilwoman Ortiz was saying, the no sidewalks, and you see a heck of a lot of kids walking home after school. The other thing is, I think we got an email from a coalition of six to eight businesses in the area. I don't know if there was ever a response to that, but they had some definite concerns to me. I mean, again, I'm just adding one more on here. The main issue is the congestion that will be created and the danger to pedestrians. I know that some of the minds have shifted and some folks now in the neighborhood are agreement with, but you know, what I've seen in three years, I'm sure is no better than now in 2025. Thank you, Mayor.
Further questions for Dan or Reina? If none, there is a procedure that I have to follow with regards to this item, and it's with regards to any ex parte communications that have occurred during consideration. So prior to proceeding with the vote, each member of the governing body who has engaged in ex parte communication with any individual either in favor of or against the matter being considered must state that the communication occurred and indicate that even in light of having engaged in the communication, they were able to fairly, objectively, and impartially consider the measure based solely upon the evidence provided on the record. The record includes the staff report, commission minutes, the testimony provided at the May Planning Commission meeting, or similar relevant information related to the matter. So I ask the governing body members, are there any ex parte communications to bring forward? Councilwoman Ortiz?
All the above, emails, texts, calls, people coming up to me, every kind of communication.
Okay. Councilman Miller, and then Councilwoman Badiyakla.
Same. I got 51,000 emails about this and some calls. It seemed like probably 20 of them today. So yeah, I will be able to still fairly give my vote.
Okay, Councilwoman.
Same, and I can be impartial in my vote.
I'd also like to ask the city attorney to give us an overview of the voting options that are available to the governing body for consideration on this item.
Mr. Mayor, because a valid protest petition was filed, if you would like to approve what the Planning Commission has put before you, that requires eight votes. If you'd like to amend the recommendation and approve it, that also requires eight votes. If you would like to reject the Planning Commission's recommendation, which rejects the rezone, so it stays its current zoning, that requires six votes. You do need to make a final action. You may not take it with.
Okay, I see a lot of numbers popping up here. There is a motion, but I see other council members are, are they to speak? Do you have more comment? Okay, well, let's let that happen. Deputy Mayor, here are numbers up first.
Just the aspect of the emails, phone calls, and I can make an impartial judgment on this.
Councilman Duncan.
Same here, emails, phone calls, texts from both sides, even at church, Mayor, but I can make an impartial judgment.
What'd your mother say?
Not telling.
Councilman Dobler?
Same. I've had partay and ex parte and all kinds of partay, and I can make an impartial judgment.
Councilman Banks?
Thank you, Mayor. I've had conversation, phone calls, the emails, and I think I can make an impartial vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Hiller?
Same as everyone else. I do think that with our remand, that all the stuff that we had that had not been in the minutes or their consideration at first got into it. So I'm pleased that they did another round, but I'm good. Thank you.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Hofer. You need to state your motion, please.
Okay, first, I'm going to say I also had emails, phone calls, texts, conversations, everything, and I can make a fair judgment. And I'm going to move that we reject the zoning.
Okay. I have a second by Councilwoman Ortiz. Everyone ready to vote? Okay. Madam Clerk?
Correct.
The vote is to reject.
Correct. That takes six. So a yes is to reject.
Yes. I am, I am.
Okay, the motion carries. We have nine yes with Councilmember Banks voting no. The motion carries to reject.
All right. Thank you for the discussion. So we'll go back now to our action items. Okay, we'll resume the regular order of business. 5A, Madam Clerk.
As an ordinance introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert Perez, authorizing and providing the issuance of $26,865,000 aggregate principal amount of general obligation bond series 2025A of the City of Topeka, Kansas, providing for the levying collection of an annual tax for the purpose of paying the principal of and interest on said bonds as they become due, authorizing certain other documents and actions in connection therewith, and making certain covenants with respect thereto.
City Manager here.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the governing body, Josh McNarny of Budget and Finance, Division Director, and Caitlin Dwyer of Columbia Capital Management will report on items 5A, 5B, 5C, 5D, and 5E. But yeah, so just wouldn't have to introduce them every time.
Okay, all of that, their testimony will be for all those items, but we vote on them individually.
Individually, yes, sir.
Okay. Josh?
Good evening, everybody. Today, we sold two bond series and one note series. First, we'll highlight the 2025A series. I'll have Caitlin getting details of the sale. But the projects involved in that sale were our large-scale parking garage projects, our City Hall T-PAC HVAC project, traffic signal projects, and our program that maintains our facilities. Those are the major highlights of what we bought, of what we sold today via bonds. But I'll let Caitlin get into the specific sale for 2025A.
Thanks, Josh. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Caitlin Dwyer with Columbia Capital Management. We are the city's financial advisor. Like Josh indicated, we sold two series of bonds and one series of notes today for the city for various projects. The resolution in front of you now pertains specifically to the series 2025A tax-exempt bonds in the amount of $26,865,000. The auction was very successful. Seven banks showed up to place bids for the bonds. The bids ranged from 4.19% to 4.44%. The winning bidder was Robert Baird, a bank that frequently shows up to bid on the city's bonds and notes. And you'll see their name again tonight because they also purchased one of the series, city series of notes, or excuse me, the other series of bonds, which we will be discussing. But the point being, the interest rate, 4.19% over 20 years, a great result for the sale today. And with that, I'll take any questions you might have with regard to that series of bonds.
Questions from the body? Is there a motion from the body? Motion to approve by Deputy Mayor? No, there's a second by Councilman Miller, but a question from Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. It's not so much a question as a comment, and staff is prepared for this, I think. As most of us know, we're really being challenged with our budget. We've held off on our capital improvement plan to vote after the budget because we are facing a major deficit and needing to, you know, stay within our policies and trim as much as we can. I had concerns, I think that the A through E are probably legal and okay to pass, but I have some procedural concerns that I want to state, and I will probably vote no on them because of these concerns. In the case of each of these items, there was no itemization of what we were actually bonding, so that for us on council, we've got an idea of what's moving forward. I think that's important. We also have in our bonding policy, we're not supposed to bond things over their lifespan. The idea is that we're bonding things that are strategic investments that are going to last long enough that it's worth having our children and grandchildren be, help pay for them. There are items in this first one, for instance, 5A, mill and overlays are only expected to last 10 years. We also expect that our fleet, our heavy-duty fleet and our fire trucks, for instance, have a lifespan of 10 years. So bonding them for 20 years, I'm very uncomfortable with. We've also had the conversations in the course of discussing the CIP this spring and prior even, that we had finally gotten the terms of our borrowing down to 15 years, which really helps long-term what the cost is to run our city. And I am not comfortable with us going up over 15 years. I've said so before. It's been an issue as we postponed voting on the CIP, and I was dismayed to see it come forward. Just in general terms, for council members, sometimes this goes over people's heads and it gets complex for me, too. But if you're borrowing for 15 years, then each year, if you borrow the same amount or a little bit more, whatever, those stack to where you're paying the payments on 15 years' worth of stuff as time passes on. When you go to 20 years, you're adding 20, 25% to that, 30% to that, going from 15 years' worth of borrowing to 20. When I first got elected to council, the council before had done that. They had extended the rate, the number of years in their borrowing to try and save money in year one, and that added up to the point where we not only had more than we could handle, but we also went into an economic decline in 2010, 11, and 12. We laid off 100 people, took our reserves all the way down to $4 million. I don't ever want to see us do that again. And I think being very careful with what we bond versus what we pay cash for and how we bond. I was concerned also that on this cover sheet for 5A as well as subsequent ones, it says we're borrow, under budgetary impact, it says we're borrowing for 20 years, that, all those costs plus costs of issuance and interest costs will be included while maintaining a projected flat debt service fund mill levy. And at the request of some of us during the course of the budget meetings that we had earlier, we did, Josh is always very responsive, and we got either a 10-year, 10-year-plus projection, and within seven or eight years, if we borrow what's in the proposed CIP right now, we will have to raise taxes by two mills to, in order to pay our debt service. I don't want us to get started on that track. So just wanted to share that again. As far as I know, what's in front of us is legal, and I think that disclosure of whether or not we actually knew about this project, there's some projects later, you know, and what those costs were as we do our project approvals, and then with our bonding, that we know what it is that's coming forward. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, one point of clarification. So Councilmember Hiller is right that we are shifting in the proposed budget, shifting two mills from our debt service fund into our general fund to give us more money into the general fund. But that doesn't mean we're projecting to raise the mill levy overall in what was provided in a 10-year span. That would be a flat mill levy. But how that is divided up between our three funds of special liability, debt service, and the general fund, there would be interchanging of the mills in there, but overall, we keep the mill levy flat in what we provide to the body.
Thank you. Councilwoman?
If I could briefly respond, the deal is that we're, your proposal is to move those two mills from the debt service fund in order to cover the operating budget this year. But we're, even in doing that, your budget document shows that we would be $15 million in the hole for 2027 without coming up with additional sources of revenue. And so however you want to look at it, having to move that same two mills back or charge an extra two mills somewhere is what it would take in time.
Yeah, I just wanted to indicate that we didn't give out anything proposing that we're raising the mill levy, because it's been very clear for the body to keep it flat.
I understand. Thank you.
Further comment? If none, we have a motion on the floor. A motion to approve by Deputy Mayor and a second by Councilman Miller. We're ready to vote. Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. I guess I do have a question for City Manager. Councilwoman Hiller made a comment, when we bond these amounts, we don't have a list of the projects we're bonding them for specifically?
So Councilman Duncan, these are actually, if I'm correct, these are actually for our 2025 projects in the CIP. So if you go look at the 2025 CIP that's been adopted, that's what these are going to be funding. So, and I mean, the other projects, I think, like the firm, we have a detailed list of firm projects.
Yeah, I can, we have, we have a report that we have to send to Columbia Capital that breaks out an itemized list of the specific amounts that we're bonding, and that should have been in the agenda. If it's not, I apologize, but I can send that to the governing body, because that is what, for the people who have to bid on the bonds, they have to see that project list as well.
Okay. Thank you.
So the list does exist, it just needs to be shared.
Yeah. So the 2025 CIP list, if you go look at the budget book, that's what we're funding with these bonds. There are some roll-up, like the firm, that it's one-line item, but we have the details of something like that available.
Take a breath. We have a motion and a second. We're ready to vote.
Okay, it looks like we have nine yes with Councilmember Hiller voting no. The motion carries.
Move on to action item 5B. Madam Clerk?
B is a resolution introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert Perez, prescribing the form and details of an authorization and directing the sale and delivery of $26,865,000 aggregate principal amount of general obligation bonds, series 2025A of the City of Topeka, Kansas, previously authorized by the ordinance of the issuer, making certain covenants and agreements to provide for the payment and certainty of thereof, and authorizing certain other documents and actions connected therewith.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll defer to Josh and Caitlin on this item as well.
I don't have anything to add. This is just a tandem item with previous ordinance.
Like was previously stated, all three of these are related.
Yep.
Okay. Any questions or a motion from the body? Motion to approve by Councilman Miller? A second by Councilman Dobler, and a comment from Councilman Duncan?
Just a clarification. So there's five bonds in front of us, right?
Two bond series and one note series.
The one note series, okay. And those have all already been?
Sold, yes.
Right. I know, we have this discussion every time, that part of the process. Because what happens if we voted no tonight?
If we voted no, that, and I'll let Caitlin chime in, but it would be very reputational damage to the city because we sold bonds and then...
It was kind of a rhetorical question.
Okay, sorry.
And no, you're fine. I guess my real question is, and this is always my concern, is it feels like at times that that decision is made for us already. And that's, I think, the difficult position that we are then put in when we sit up here and decide, if I have concerns or want us to take a breath and talk about it, we can't do that. So there's a... a feeling I've got to vote yes because of the very bad ramifications that would happen after we've sold this that would, could downgrade us and create other issues for us versus bringing this to us first before we go to market. And I've said, we've said we had this conversation before, and I get it. It's based on when you can sell it. It's based on interest rates. All that makes sense. But I think we have got to review that, because I think it really puts us in a terrible position of sometimes wanting to ask the questions Councilwoman Miller has, but being in a position of knowing if we don't, the ramifications are pretty awful. So just want to express that concern, and something I really wish we could have a longer conversation at some point about, about how this process works. So thank you, City Manager. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Miller?
Thank you. And I think it can be resolved if the, the items are itemized when the agenda comes out, two weeks, you know, week and a half before, gives everybody time to look at what's being done. If anybody's tracking certain project or purchase, it's there. Josh is very good at answering, but there was nothing to look at in advance. So I do think it can be resolved. It was, you know, once I knew what the projects were, I knew whether they had a 10-year lifespan or not. It's plenty of time in advance of those bonds being purchased or bid on to restructure it if need be, or at least to resolve why we're doing what we're doing.
So, so if I may, Councilwoman Miller. So you mentioned perhaps discussing these items a few weeks in advance. So issuing bonds, it's a, it's a months-long process of getting documents together, running numbers, putting an offering document together, printing that offering document, soliciting investors to show up to place bids for the bonds. It's a, it's an ordeal. There's a lot of work that goes involved, that's involved in that. I think the place, or the time to discuss these matters would be when the CIP is considered and approved. Because implicit in approving the CIP, that, that CIP details what projects are being bonded and what projects are being funded with cash. And so based off that, the city then determines how much to borrow, because it was laid out in the CIP. And then they come to us and they ask us, okay, what's the best way to do that? So to give folks enough time, I, I think the best time to do this would be during CIP discussions, because we can't get a bond, well, we, it would be very bad form to try to get a bond deal together, spend weeks or a couple of months doing it, and then learn just a couple of weeks in advance that the city has decided not to issue bonds. And that's ultimately the city's decision, but the city, it would be best to make that decision as early as possible. And I think when the CIP is approved is, is when that decision should be, should be discussed.
I think, I appreciate that advice. You know, some of us have brought those things up during the CIP process. The kind of stock language, and I'm not going to get, I'm not going to say it exactly right, is bonds are other legally allowable costs. So sometimes there is some discussion about whether we could use cash or grants or something like that for something that we don't know at the time that we pass the CIP. Part of the reason I'm speaking up now, though, is that I, that can be a little squishy, if you want to call it that. But recalling, you know, well-intended commentary at the time that the CIP is considered, needs to carry forward for us internally, too.
That's, that's fair. Yeah. And, yeah, so, so that just comes down to policy, which obviously is outside of my purview. I'm just here to find our advisor, but just thought of it.
Councilman Duncan and then Councilman Dobler?
Just one final point. I mean, we, and I recognize, we approve these projects, and they have to be paid for. So I think we all agree, that's a very basic, we're going to approve the projects, they've got to be paid for. I think sometimes, for instance, as we've talked about the new CIP and how we're going to change bonding moving forward as we work through the budget, moving from that 15-year term to 20-year term, because that's more of a standard for cities. But when we approved this CIP, some of those weren't in place yet. So I think part of it, the only nuance here, the difference is, when we approved the CIP, we did it under one understanding that we were going to do 15 years and cer, and then that changed. We haven't really changed those policies yet completely. So I don't think anyone objects to that, but I think those are the differences. Sometimes if we can have those conversations, when, when some of it changes, we'll be better off. But outside of that, I mean, I understand why we need to do it. We did approve, I will clarify, I do understand, we approved these projects, we got to pay for these projects because we're trying to build these projects as we speak. So, so I do understand that, and they're important projects. But I think that's why we just want to try to, as much leeway as we can have these conversations avoids these conversations in the future. So, thank you.
Councilman Dobler?
Thank you, Mayor. I, number one, I like the fact that we've put discussion of the future CIP off until after the budget discussion, because what we do there affects next year's budget. And we've had this, we've had this discussion before, and Josh and I have as well. It's, I don't know that there's a fix to it, but when a project, and there is a list of projects in the documentation, if you dig far enough, but, you know, for instance, parking facilities and structures. We, we passed that project two, three years ago. It's been done. It's $13 million. There is a disconnect when we pass a project, because it takes so long to build it, and the effect of debt service long-term. And if there's a way to, you know, be able to show as we, as, the only gate we really have is either passing a project or not. And if there's a way to show when we pass those projects, we always get a little blurb about debt service and so on, but it's all disconnected, because there's one project here, another project there. You put it all together, and that's what we're going to be facing in a year or two, is, is having to increase the funding, most likely, to the debt service fund. So if there's any way at all to be able to show the council the long-term effects of a project that they're passing today, particularly now with the 20-year cycle, I think, and just a quick comment on that, I've seen, I've seen us go from 10 to 20, back to 15 over the years. And I think, I think that's reasonable, because I think there's times, just like, you know, in your personal life, sometimes you have to borrow money. Sometimes you have to borrow money on your house to fix it or do other things. But then when times are good, you can come back and maybe do something different. So I think we need to, need to be looking at that long-term. And, you know, it's going to be a tight few years, and then inevitably, the times will be good at some point, like they have been for the last three or four years, and you come back and look at the opportunity to refund debt, to get back to that 15 years. I know the standard's 20, but that's a long time, and it just does add to the overall, the overall debt service that you're paying. So no real fix for anything here, just, just that idea that being able to look long-term at the effects of what we're doing today makes a lot of sense. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor from Councilman Miller, second from Neil Dobler, Councilman Dobler. We're ready to vote.
Okay, we have nine yes with Councilmember Miller voting no. The motion carries.
Okay. Action Item 5C, Madam Clerk?
C is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert Perez, authorizing and providing for the issuance of $9,140,000 aggregate principal amount of general obligation bonds, Series 2025B of the City of Topeka, Kansas, providing for the levy and collection of an annual tax for the purpose of paying the principal of and interest on said bonds as they become due, authorizing certain other documents and actions in connection therewith, making certain covenants with respect thereto.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you. I'll defer to Josh and Caitlin again.
So this was the second bond series that we sold. They'll let Caitlin get into the sale details in a second. But this was for the Lawrence Bay payment of prior special assessments, and then for the Hotel Topeka capital asset. Now, one thing to keep in mind is, by bonding today for Hotel Topeka, we're foregoing the additional rollover of temp note, which was about a half a million dollars. But then also, when we issued the initial temp note back 12 to 15 months ago, we had some unspent proceeds to where this, this bond series, we used to lower the, we did a cash infusion from the unspent, unspent proceeds to tune up $454,000 to lower all, lower the overall amount of debt we were issuing for the series. So I think that's important note, but I'll let Caitlin get into the sale details.
Thank you, Josh. Mayor, City Council. So like I said earlier, we sold two series of bonds. This is the second series. It's a taxable series, $9,140,000. We had two banks show up to place bids on this one, which isn't as many as we'd like. This is a taxable deal, meaning that interest income on the bonds is subject to taxation, unlike most municipal bonds, which are tax-exempt. So when you're selling taxable bonds, demand for those can be a little less certain. So it's certainly expected less bids. We'd certainly like to get three or four bids next time if we can, but we got enough bids. We got two bids here, and they were actually very, very close, less than a single basis point separated them, which is less than 0.01%. So a basis point being one one-hundredth of 1%, the two bids, just to be specific. The winning bank, again, Robert W. Baird, 5.22%. And the second-place bid, Piper Sandler &amp; Company, 5.227%. So you had to go out to three decimal places just to distinguish the two, two bids here. So a very competitive result, and a rate frankly, lower than we expected going in. So the result was good, all things considered. And with that, I'll take any questions you might have with regard to this series of bonds.
Any questions from the body? Councilwoman Valdivia Akla?
Thank you, Mayor. So you're saying this was for Hotel Topeka, and did you say something else about Lawrence Bay?
Yeah, so this would be paying off the prior, and back, if I'm chiming in from wrong, about paying off the prior special assessments from Lawrence Bay.
This directly relates to the CID that was passed a few weeks ago, and that was to allow for the creation of the CID, so that we would take and put those future special assessments, amortize those over 20 years, issue the bonds to pay off the existing special assessments. And so the net result is that instead of property owners and the city's three lots and the 15 lots of the developer having to pay close to $300 a month in special assessments, it takes those down to about $165 a month over the course of the next 20 years, so that we will be fully, fully paid back for those future special assessments.
And that discount, that produce rate will go towards Costman as well. He will be afforded that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Further questions? Josh, there are a motion from the body?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Miller, second by Deputy Mayor. Ready to vote?
Okay, it looks like we have eight yes with Councilmembers Valdivia Akla and Banks voting no. The motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, when you're ready, 5D.
D is a resolution introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert Perez, prescribing the form and details of and authorizing and directing the sale and delivery of $9,140,000 of aggregate principal amount of general obligation bonds, Series 2025B of the City of Topeka, Kansas, previously authorized by the ordinance of the issuer, making certain covenants and agreements to provide for the payment and security thereof, and authorizing certain other documents and actions connected therewith.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you. I'll defer to Josh and Caitlin to lead us to this item.
Thanks, City Manager. This is just a tandem item as a resolution for the previous item. Those were the ones.
Any questions? Is there a motion from the body? Motion to approve by Councilman Miller, second by Councilman Dobler. We're ready to vote.
Okay, we have eight yes. The motion carries with Councilmember Valdivia Akla and Banks voting no.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, 5E, please.
E is a resolution introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert Perez, authorizing and directing the issuance, sale, and delivery of $9,280,000 in the aggregate principal amount of general obligation temporary, temporary renewal and improvement notes, Series 2025A, providing for the levy and collection of an annual tax if necessary, for the purpose of paying the principal of and interest on said notes as they become due, making certain covenants and agreements to provide for the payment and security thereof, and authorizing certain other documents and actions connected therewith.
City Manager?
Thank you. Josh and Caitlin will lead us to this item as well.
Governing body, so this, what this temporary note sold was, one, our fleet building, so for 5.1 million. Now, we don't think we're going to actually, when we permanently finance this, need all the 5.1 million. We're still expecting to get 3.2 million of federal relocation assistance, but until we get that, we don't want to permanently bond anything. And then for the digester, this is the second time we're temp noting that. We think we're working through the FEMA process to get full reimbursement for that, but we don't think, if all comes to plan, knock on wood, that we won't ever have to permanently bond that. We'll have full FEMA reimbursement. So this is just a precaution. So with that, I'll turn over to Cam for the sale.
Thank you, Josh. Mayor, City Council, so this is the last three bond and note sales this morning. $9,280,000 worth of general obligation temporary notes. Like Josh said, these are temporary notes that are due next October 1, October 1, 2026, just to be clear. And we received one bid this morning for the notes. Fortunately, it was a very good bid. BNY Mellon Capital Markets bid 2.77%. Taking a look at comps, comparable transactions for other Kansas cities in recent weeks, I couldn't find one that sold temporary notes for, for less than a 3% yield. So City Dodge City, Kansas comes to mind. They were in the market recently, and they were, they were at 3% or higher. And there were a few others. So despite the fact we only got a single bid, which is disappointing, it was a great rate and an overall good result. So with that, I will open it up to any questions.
Questions from the body? We have a motion to approve by Deputy Mayor, second by Councilman Dobler. We're ready to vote.
Okay, we have 10 yes. The motion carries.
Thank you. Action Item 5F, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Josh. Thank you, too.
F is a public hearing for consideration of the adoption of the 30th and Topeka Boulevard Tax Increment Financing TIF District Project Plan, and an ordinance introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert Perez, adopting a redevelopment project plan for the 30th and Topeka Boulevard TIF District pursuant to KSA 121770 as amended.
Okay, for this item, I believe we have to have a public hearing procedure. So at this time, I will open the public hearing and ask if there is anyone present who would like to speak to the matter. Sir, step forward.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Bob Johnson with the Paulsonelli Law Firm here, representing the developer, Batiste Development Company. Mark Whittenberg, President, is here. Matt Werner, Vice President, and Matt McNary, the CFO, are also here. I know that Riannon will give a presentation on the project. We were before you in July, I believe it was July 15, providing a presentation on the project at that time as well. I don't want to waste any of your time to reiterate things that we may have told you then, but I do want to be respectful in case there is anything that I can provide to you information-wise. Certainly don't want to provide a thin presentation if you'd like something fuller and deeper. Happy to go into any details and answer any questions you have. I will be back up here in CID, public hearing as well, in the case you have questions there. So with that, I will sit down, but again, happy to answer any questions. So with that, I will sit down, but again, happy to answer any questions you have at any time that this would be appropriate on the next three items. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson, I'm just going to ask very quickly from the governing body. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'll ask again. At this time, is there anyone else present who would like to speak to this matter? And for the final time, is there anyone present who would like to speak to this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Now, ask the governing body if they have any comments or questions they'd like to ask, or is there a motion? Oh, I'm sorry. You blended right in. I didn't see how that could happen. Take a hint. Now, that really is a bad move considering, right, it's unlikely we're going to be here soon.
Unrelated, I can assure you.
Riannon?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the governing body. So I do have a quick presentation, as Bob alluded to. So just so you'll see, the agenda is kind of odd in that items F, G, and H are all related. I've covered them all in this presentation, so I figured I would go through it. And then as you go through the items, I'll try to pull back those pieces of the presentation, but didn't want to give you three presentations with such a big agenda. I'm good at that. Yes, so this is a, the presentation goes over an overview of the TIF project plan for the TIF district that was approved on July 15th. The CID district, that public hearing was held on July 15th, as well as the development agreement that really ties this whole project together in one structured agreement. All right, so the applicant on this is Batiste Development Group. As mentioned, they are here in the audience. And the proposed project calls for the demolition of an existing structure on the 2.66 acre site located at the northeast corner of 30th and Topeka Boulevard. After the demolition, there's a proposed redevelopment of the site. That redevelopment includes the construction of up to one developer-owned QSR, Quick Service Restaurant, and up to two commercial buildings that will be owned by a third party. Just to talk about the budget at a high level, the developer estimates a total budget of the project at 19.31 million with approximately 9.24 million ultimately paid by the developer. All right, so keying in on that location a little closer, so Batiste is approving the TIF project plan for the district that was approved on July 15th. That district is highlighted in yellow, as you can see. It includes the current hotel property that's located there that's being proposed for the demolition. All right, so this page provides an overview of the TIF and the CID reimbursements. This is also pulled directly from the development agreement, but I wanted to put it on its own slide just to let you put your eyes on it a little closer as well. So what's being proposed here is 1.6 million of eligible CID funds for reimbursement and 3.8 million in eligible TIF reimbursements. There is also a maximum to not to exceed in the development agreement of the total of those two numbers of 5.4 million. This project, the applicant, is also requesting eligible sales tax revenues that are to be generated within the project area in result of the development during the TIF term as called out in the TIF Act. All right, so I wanted to put together some slides that break down some of the highlights of the development agreement, some of the terms that were part of our findings of our financial analysis and discussion from the several review committee meetings that were had. Those items were putting a maximum combined reimbursement cost, as we just discussed, of the 5.4 million. We also put some set-in-place commitment dates that would be required for the projects to start. So the commencement date for the TIF would be July 1st of 2027, and then the CID would commence set at January 1st of 2028. We also put a specific place-in-service date of the Quick Service Restaurant being proposed to be owned and operated by the developer no later than December 31st of 2028. Additionally, a requirement included, since some of the development is being proposed a little later down the road, and we know that the intention is to build this and then work with a third party that will come in and own and operate, that the developer notify the city upon the sale of those pad sites and provide title work to include the final sale price so that we can assure that that aligns with the way that our calculations were done for our financial analysis, making sure that the Buckfour test is still in line. Also, something new that will be a part of development agreements going forward is an agreement to provide the city with adequate and timely reports, which is something that we work really hard to maintain with all of our development agreements, but is even more important now because we need to remain in compliance with the new House Bill 2304 that came out of the legislative session this past year. Okay, that's my presentation. So just as a quick synopsis of that, so the item that we're talking about right now relates to the TIF project plan. So the TIF project plan has been before the Planning Commission just to ensure that the proposed project is consistent with our land use development plans. The Planning Commission voted unanimously in agreement that it was consistent with those plans, and this just really speaks to what is going to be taking place in the project. So the demolition of the structure and then the construction of the three commercial buildings, infrastructure, land acquisition, things like that. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about the project plan.
Thank you, Riannon, and I almost overlooked that, see? What a missed hour. Any comments, questions, or I have a motion right now from the Deputy Mayor to approve? I'll second the motion. Got to get quicker on the finger, okay? Okay, second by Councilwoman Hiller. We're ready to vote.
Okay, we have 10 yes. The motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Riannon. Okay, so you're in place for five G. Madam Clerk?
G is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert Perez establishing a community improvement district CID for 30th and Topeka Boulevard and levying a CID sales tax of 1 percent within the CID.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Riannon, will also lead us through this item.
Sure, so yeah, happy to answer any questions. This element is just related to the 1 percent CID that's being proposed for the district. That is the same as the proposed TIF district outline as well.
All right. Is there a motion from the body? Motion to approve by Deputy Mayor, second by Councilman Dobler. And we're ready to vote, please.
All right, we have nine yes with Councilmember Duncan out of the room. So the motion carries.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, five H.
H is a development agreement between the City of Topeka, Kansas, and 30th and Topeka LLC, a Kansas limited liability company, the developer of the 30th and Topeka Boulevard Tax Increment Financing and Community Improvement Incentive Districts.
Riannon?
Yes. So lastly, seeking approval of the development agreement, we highlighted some of the pieces of the agreement that you have before you, but really what this does is it just pulls together the details of the TIF project plan, the TIF district, the applicable sales tax as well as the CID, and puts them into an agreement with terms.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or not? Is there a motion from the body? Motion to approve by Councilman Cal, or Deputy Mayor Cal? Karen, are you going to? Okay, second from Councilwoman Hiller. Okay, we're ready to vote.
Okay, we have, we have nine yes. The motion carries with Councilmember Duncan out of the room.
Thank you. Action item five I. Madam Clerk?
I is a public hearing to consider the establishment of the LB Lots LLC Reinvestment Housing Incentive District, the RHID, and an ordinance introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert Perez establishing a reinvestment housing incentive district for LB Lots LLC.
Okay. At this time then, I will open a public hearing and ask if there is anyone who would like to speak to this matter. Stepping forward is Councilman Duncan. For a second time. Nice here.
Danielle Twyla, thank you. Thank you for Braxton sent over some information that I had emailed out. Unfortunately, it wasn't new information, but I did learn new information this evening. So today, I want to walk you through what the Lawrence Bay RHID and CID deal truly costs taxpayers when you combine both the past decade of non-development and the future diversion of property taxes under this incentive structure. So this is taxpayer money that won't fund schools, sidewalks, public safety. The city absorbs the loss of the present-day value. The RHID CID mechanisms, meaning the other tax dollars or future public revenues, are effectively subsidizing a developer who previously failed to meet his financial obligations. So Klosman's out-of-pocket immediate expense is $102,000 upfront. The rest, 422,000, all that, is paid over time via the CID assessments, which are effectively funded by property owners in the district, including the buyers of his future homes. So he's avoiding paying the bulk of the 525,000 blah 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 as direct developer cost. So once he sells these homes, the future CID charges are the buyer's responsibility, and apparently these go-bonds, not his. This shifts this money to the special assessments to future homeowners, avoiding any responsibility. The gains marketable lots with half monthly assessment burdens, so the 150 versus the 300, making these easier sales, and it uses the RHID to redirect future property tax increments back into reimbursing infrastructure. However, we have already established that infrastructure exists that the city up fronted over a decade ago. So looking forward, the city's own financial analysis projects the RHID will reimburse the developer 2.86 million dollars over 25 years, although we keep hearing 20 years, but it says 25 in all the statements. In present value terms, that's about 1.77 million dollars plus another $454,000 lost through the special assessment restructuring. That's 2.2 million dollars in future taxpayer value redirected away from the city, the county, and school budgets. Additionally, if these lots had been developed and occupied over the last decade, as all the surrounding lots are, taxpayers would have seen roughly a million dollars of revenue that would have funded public safety, parks, libraries, schools. So the combined taxpayer impact on the 16-lot deal at Lawrence Bay, including the 10 years of historical lost revenue, plus future RHID diversion, plus assessment present-day value loss, is roughly three to four extra million dollars. This does not include the 8 million dollars that he owes in specials in the 170 other properties. So when you combine the historical loss with future diversions on all 170 totals, it's staggering. We're talking another 7.95 million dollars. So we know that this one developer, who doesn't seem to care about being accountable for what he owes, is weighing on the taxpayers to kind of cover his costs. We've already, I need to point out a few things in your city's own financial advisers' report that are cautionary statements. Quote, "The developer has not offered specific indications of its intent to guarantee completion. Neither has not offered third-party support of such guarantors, letters of credit, performance, payment bonds, et cetera," meaning if he's self-funding, then he has the money to pay us the rest of the 8 million. "As part of its application, the developer provided model home plans for four plans totaling X number of feet. It also provided a detailed construction cost of 2,550 square feet for a plan. None of these model sizes match the assumptions listed in his proposal, nor does it well exceed an RHID state-level square foot cost." Quote, "With its application," I just have three more to point out from that. Get like one minute.
Any objections? Okay, proceed.
Additional from the city's own financial adviser, "With its application, the developer offered no evidence of its access to private financing and provide no guarantees to assure the city of its ability to complete the project as presented. We do recommend the city impose reporting requirements on the developer, however, to ensure the completed project reasonably matches the assumptions identified therein. And we recommend the city impose reporting requirements on the developer as a condition of annual payment of RHID subsidy," and proceeds to go on to several more paragraphs of very specific recommendations cautionary to this application. There is just a mound of evidence as to why this is a bad deal, why it's going to be costly to our city. We're not getting all the information. Little bits of it keep coming out little by little, and it's starting to feel like lying by omission, when we know this is going to cost us millions of more dollars than what is said in front of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, I ask, is there anyone else who would like to speak to this matter? Is there anyone who would like to speak to this matter? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Now I ask of the governing body if they have any questions on this item.
Mayor, if I, if I may, I can, let me just do a brief presentation so that we all know what's in front of us today. This really goes back to September of '24. At that time, the county was getting ready to auction off a number of parcels, and the City Council passed a resolution that allowed for the 16 lots owned by the Klosman controlled entities to be removed from the tax foreclosure sale in return for the payment of taxes and the negotiated amount of specials to be agreed by the PI Committee. Fast forward to March of '25, after many lengthy negotiations between the Klosman team and the city team, we came up with a development agreement that was approved by the governing body. So that was the first step in the Triple Crown. The second was the formation of the RHID, which you guys are going to be taking action on tonight, but that was initially approved by the Commerce Department. July of '25, we did the CID, which is the vehicle by which the future specials are going to be, are going to be paid. And then tonight, we have the final action, which is the approval of the RHID. The RHID is going to allow the developer to use some of the property taxes to cover vertical construction costs. As part of this ordinance approving the RHID, we have included three very significant conditions, which are provisions to protect the city and to limit the developer's return or the cap rate, which is the potential rate of return, to the 7.5 percent, which was agreed to in the development agreement that was approved by the governing body back in March. And that includes certification of the total construction cost proved up by the pay-ups to the contractors and suppliers. It includes the evidence of the sales price proved up by the closing statement, as well as annually by the 31st of January, certification along with any supporting documents by the developer to show that their cap rate does not exceed the 7.5 percent in the developer agreement. So this is the end of almost a year-long process. This is the third step, which is the actual approval of the RHID. And again, this will allow for a portion of those property taxes to be used to pay for development costs, but are limited to a cap rate of 7.5 percent, which is set forth in developer agreement. That'll gladly stand for any questions that the governing body has.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Action. Any questions? Councilman Valdivia.
Thank you, Mayor. But just to find out for sure, if my memory serves me, the R.H.I.D. application, he was given some kind of special allowance because of all the back taxes he owed. Is that correct? The city could make that happen.
So the resolution that the city council passed in September of '24 did specifically grant an exception to this developer from the city's own policy that ordinarily would prohibit you from getting the R.H.I.D. if you had outstanding special assessments.
Okay. And out of all the R.H.I.D. applications that we've had, is this the, are there others other than Lawrence Bay, specifically Jim Klosman, that have been granted this R.H.I.D. exception?
I'm not aware of any, but I will defer to the city attorney if she's aware of it.
I am not aware of any.
Okay. And understanding that we are not the collectors of the sales tax, but that is the people's money, more or less. I mean, they all have to pay their sales tax. Understanding is that he still owes several million in unpaid back taxes, correct?
So the R.H.I.D. only involves the 15 lots?
I understand. That's not my question.
I believe that there have been records shared showing that he owns almost 100 lots out there, and there are outstanding taxes on the other lots.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Any further questions? Councilman Mayor?
As a point of clarification on what the councilwoman just said, has there been anybody else who has asked for that type of deal, for an R.H.I.D.?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from the body? Councilwoman Valdivia.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just say we should be grateful that no one else has asked for that, because that is a pretty ballsy kind of request that shows that there's a lot of power wielded by those that have a lot of money and influence, because who of us would ask for those type of deals, not as average Joes, but the ones that wheel and deal in this city and have a lot of impact? They can, and they are afforded that right at our expense, at the average Joe's expense. Thank you, Mayor.
I have a motion from Councilman Dobler to approve. Is there a second? Second from Deputy Mayor. We're ready to vote.
Okay, we have seven yes. The motion carries with Councilmembers Valdivia, Akala, Banks, and Hofer voting no.
Okay, thank you. Move to action item five J. Madam Clerk?
J is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert Perez, amending the district map referred to made a part of the zoning ordinances by Section 1850-050 of the Topeka Municipal Code by providing for certain changes in zoning on property located at 2701 North Kansas Avenue and 2703 North Kansas Avenue, from R1 Single Family Residential District and C4 Commercial District to M2 Multiple Family Dwelling District.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the governing body, Dan Warner, our planning director, will lead us through this item.
City Manager, thank you. Mayor governing body, this particular application is a rezoning from R1 and a little bit of C4 to the M2 zoning district. That's to accommodate the proposed use of multifamily residential on the property. And, sorry. So the project is slated to be approximately 190 affordable housing units. The applicant is applying for low-income housing tax credits, and if successful, will build this project. So the applicant held a well-attended neighborhood information meeting, had some folks turn out and ask about the project. Planning Commission considered this project at their July 21st meeting and recommended approval. Staff recommends approval as well. Be happy to try to answer any questions.
Any questions from the governing body? Councilman Valdivia.
Thank you, Mayor. This is in my district, and I have received nothing in the way of phone calls that would say that they were against this. And we all know low-income housing is actually really needed. My hope would be that, you know, these folks that are doing the affordable housing, you know, sound as good as what it sounds, but I definitely will be supporting this. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. And to follow up on that, prior to the vote on this particular item, each member of the governing body who has engaged in any ex parte communication with any individual either in favor of or against the matter being considered must state that that communication occurred and indicate that even in light of having engaged in the communication, they were able to fairly objectively and impartially consider the measure based only upon the evidence provided on the record. The record includes the planning commission minutes, the staff report and its attachments, the public comments made during the planning commission hearing, and similar relevant information related to the matter. So I ask members of the governing body, are there any ex parte communications to bring forward? Councilwoman Valdivia? Thank you. Any further? Okay. So are there any questions for Dan on this item? Seeing none. Dan, thank your presentation. There is a motion to approve by Councilwoman Valdivia, a second by Councilman Banks. We're ready to move. Any vote?
Okay, we have nine yes. The motion carries with Councilmember Hofer out of the room.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Dan. Okay, so we skipped 5K, because we took care of that. And we're now to action item five L. Madam Clerk?
L is a resolution introduced by the Public Infrastructure Committee comprised of Councilmembers Sylvia Ortiz, David Banks, and Neil Dobler, recommending approval of project number 841098 Phase 6 for street improvements to Southwest 37th Street between Topeka Boulevard and Kirkland Avenue.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the governing body, Steve Groh, our Public Works Director, will lead us through this item.
Good evening, Mayor. Governing body, this is Mill and Overlay with some full-depth patching on Southwest 37th Street from Topeka Boulevard to Kirkland, which is the entrance to the South Walmart. This is part of our 2025 pavement management program, and will be funded by the half-cent citywide sales tax. We're seeking your approval. We'll get this project out for biz and get it funded and constructed yet this year.
Okay. Seeing no questions. I see a motion to approve by Deputy Mayor and a second by Councilman Dobler. Okay, we're ready to vote.
Okay, we have 10 yes. The motion carries.
Okay, Steve. Move on to action item five M. Madam Clerk?
M is a resolution introduced by the Public Infrastructure Committee comprised of Councilmembers Sylvia Ortiz, David Banks, and Neil Dobler, recommending approval of project numbers 291146 Phase 1, 291138 Phase 1, 291139 Phase 1, and 291142 Phase 2 for equipment, materials, supplies, and labor necessary for install and startup of the Central Park Rock Fire North Odor Control Project as further described in Exhibit A.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you. Mayor, members of the governing body, Sylvia Davis, our Director of Utilities, will lead us through this item.
Director Davis?
Good evening, Mayor. Governing body, tonight we come before you seeking the approval of the Central Park and North Rock Fire Odor Control Projects. Combined, we are asking for approval of 3.6 million dollars to do these improvements. We did present this work to the Public Infrastructure Committee last month, and it was approved. And I can stand for any questions if you guys have any.
Questions, Mr. Sylvia? Anything from the Public Infrastructure group? You guys are good.
It's a great project.
My screen closed on me there. Who's the motion to approve?
We have a motion by Councilmember Ortiz and seconded by Banks.
Okay, I couldn't see it. All right, ready to vote.
Okay, we have nine yes. The motion carries with Councilmember Kel out of the room.
Okay. Going down the alphabet, five N. Madam Clerk?
Okay. M is a resolution introduced, I'm sorry, we're on N. M is a resolution introduced by the Public Infrastructure Committee comprised of Councilmembers Sylvia Ortiz, David Banks, and Neil Dobler, recommending approval of project numbers 291105 Phase 3, 291120 Phase 6, 29140 Phase 1, and 291141 Phase 1 for pump station equipment replacement near Lake Shawnee as further described in Exhibit A.
Director Davis?
Thank you. Again, we are seeking approval for a project that will replace three failing pump stations near Lake Shawnee with two new wastewater pump stations. So we're going to be able to eliminate one of those existing pump stations with this project if you approve. We are seeking just over 4 million dollars in revenue bond authorization to do this work. And again, this did go in front of the Public Infrastructure Committee last month as well. So I stand for any questions you might have.
Seeing no questions, motion to approve by Councilwoman Ortiz, seconded by Councilwoman Banks. Ready to vote?
Okay, we have 10 yes. The motion carries.
Thank you. I thank the Public Infrastructure Committee for their work. Hardworking, excuse me, Committee for their work, led by hard-working Councilwoman Sylvia Ortiz. David Banks, that's right. She told me to say that. Move on to action item five O. Madam Clerk?
O is discussion with possible action of an ordinance introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert Perez, adopting the 2025 edition of the Uniform Public Offense Code, amending Section 905080 of the Topeka Municipal Code and repealing original section.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the governing body, Amanda Stanley, our city attorney, will lead us through this item.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. I will let Dan click through the presentation as I go, rather than go grab the clicker real quick. But this is an item that you guys deal with on an annual basis. This is the Uniform Public Offense Code. This is an annual code that is produced by the Kansas League of Municipalities. We update it every year following the legislative session to make sure that our databases have the most complete set of laws based off what is a criminal offense in Kansas that is prosecuted in municipal court and through our law enforcement officers. This is annually needed to keep our software up to date with the TPD as well as prosecution. This year, though, it's pretty simple. There was only one section that actually needed amended, and that is Section 6.72. This is trespassing on critical infrastructure. This year, the legislature expanded what qualifies as a critical infrastructure facility by adding certain facilities that are above or below ground relating to cable or wire use for communications, broadband, wireless, video services. With the exception of that, every year, we always go through to make sure that any of the prior year's deletions and amendments to the Uniform Code are ones that are still necessary inside the city of Topeka. We do continue to recommend the deletions and additions that have been made in previous years due to more specific ordinances passed by this body related to tobacco, bows and arrows, smoking regulations, and cruelty to animals. And with that, I am happy to stand for any questions. As there was only one change this year, we thought maybe we'd save some time and see if you'd just vote on it tonight instead of coming back next week.
Okay. Well, I don't see that there's a need to come back. I'd like to make this an action item and ask for a vote. If I can, it a motion to approve by Councilman Dobler and a second by Councilman Banks, I think we're ready to vote on this.
Okay, the motion carries with nine yes. The mayor does not vote on this item. The motion carries.
Go to action item five P related to the same.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I should look for three. Got excited. Speed this up.
B is discussion with possible action of an ordinance introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert Perez, adopting the 2025 edition of the standard traffic ordinances, amending Sections 1015-010 and 020 of the Topeka Municipal Code and repealing original sections.
Okay. Mr. City Manager or City Attorney?
I will take this one, too. This is the companion to the Uniform Public Offense Code. This is the Uniform Standard Traffic Ordinance, STO, also published by the League, also updated annually for the same reasons. This year, there were a couple different laws that impacted traffic. First off, passing a stationary vehicle displays in hazard caution lights. Now it doesn't matter what kind of vehicle that is on the side of the road. If they're on the side of the road, just be a good human and pull over so that you don't hit them as they are trying to change their tire or for any other reason while they are on the side of the road. It's also now state law that you are supposed to move over into the other lane and slow to a safe passing speed whenever possible. So that is a new law in the state of Kansas. Move over to the left lane if you see someone pulled off to the side of the road. Section 11.5, the League realized they had a typo in previous years, so they have fixed a typo and corrected. They had all-terrain vehicles, and it was supposed to be worksite utility vehicles. So that is just a typo correction by the League. And then also, Section 201.1, this was a one-year law that took effect, and so now it has been removed since it is now we are on to the uniform changes that we're moving forward after the one year. With that, we always also have our carryover speeds. Again, we review these annually to make sure that they're still appropriate in the city of Topeka. These are based off of more specific ordinances or ordinances that you have in conflict. We do recommend these continue to be carried over on maximum speed limits, right, left, and U-turns at intersections, pedestrians to use the right half of crosswalks, and pedestrian solicitation on highways, inattentive driving, unattended motor vehicles, driving on sidewalks, parade and processions, usable bike paths, bike pedals, driving where your license is suspended, canceled, or revoked, operations motor vehicles by habitual violators, vehicle license, illegal tags, and fines doubled in school zones. And these are all based off ordinances that this governing body has specifically passed.
Any questions? Seeing none, motion to approve by Councilwoman Ortiz and a second by Councilman Dobler. Ready to vote? I don't want to vote.
You can veto if I really rather you not.
It says I vote here, but I don't want to.
I have to be fast on the drive and log you up. All right, we have nine yes. The motion carries, and the mayor does not vote on this one.
Did you get the results?
Started with the discussion items.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I didn't hear your results, so, sorry. I didn't hear your results, so, sorry.
Motion carries nine yes.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Non-action items, Madam Clerk.
A is discussion related to the city of Topeka 2026 operating budget.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, Members of the Governing Body. Josh McInerney and our public safety teams will be going into some more detail as part of our proposed 2026 budget. Again, this evening will be overview of our public safety departments to include police, fire, municipal courts, and co-compliance. But that I'll turn it over to Josh to get us started.
Good evening, again, Governing Body. So like City Manager said, we're kind of going over the public safety portfolio of the city tonight with police, fire, municipal court. I don't have much to say besides, unlike public works and utilities, police, fire, municipal court are all personnel's, all general funds. So tonight is a very heavy fund, or heavy general fund night as compared to something like public works, which spins out of a multitude of funds across the city. So with that, I'll turn it over to Chief to kind of get going on this budget.
Chief, when you're ready.
I'd like to have. That's what you do. Good evening, Mayor, Members of the Governing Body, City Manager, all communities in, all the community members present, watching. My name is Chris Vallejo, Chief of Police. I have my business manager Gretchen O'Donnell here with me, and we're here to present an overview of the 2026 police budget on behalf of the men and women of the Austin Police Department. The mission of the Topeka Police Department is to provide a safe community and faithfully serve our citizens with impeccable integrity, professionalism, and immeasurable honor. Now, for 2026, I want to go over some adjustments that we're adding to the budget. First is we've added a staffing study in the amount of $150,000. This will be the first staffing study that we're aware of that's to be conducted. This staffing study is to determine how many officers we need and civilian staff to meet the current service demands. It will look at call volume, response times, and the types of duties performed, and basically what type of police department, what kind of services we want to offer. Also examine the appropriate balance between sworn and non-s sworn, and it will help us guide our future hiring and budgeting decisions going forward. Proposing adding Lexipol to our services as well. And our partners at the Fire Department already have this service. Lexipol just provides policy manuals, training, and resources for public safety. When I took office, I vowed to do a top-to-bottom assessment of all our policies. This is the next iteration. This service helps us stay current with the changing laws that go out there, there in policing and law. It helps us with best practices and risk management as well. They offer customizable policies, but we can tailor the policies to what we need for Topeka. And they just make sure that they're lawful, defensible, current, and best practice. As an example, if a law were to change in Kansas or something federally that would affect one of our policies, they would notify us right away and make a change. So they're kind of oversight for us, and they have a whole cadre of defense folks, lawyers, practitioners that work for Lexipol that keep our policies best and current with allow us to modify those things specifically for Topeka. We added six civilian positions, two civilian positions for the Police Activities League. We want to formalize that program a little bit better, and we want to have a more robust engagement with youth in our community. So adding two positions to our Community Policing Bureau would help with that regard. One TCALC officer is another civilian position that we want to keep. That's another bridge between police, law enforcement, and folks and students in our high schools. And adding three Crime Scene Investigations Unit officers, civilianizing that unit as well, or at least adding three for best practice, that will enable us to start transitioning from law enforcement officers in crime scene investigations to a better practice, which is civilian employees and better utilizing those sworn staff in other positions. We removed 11 positions within the department for the adjustments at a total of $861,000. Assistant chiefs, one assistant chief, one sergeant, detective, two officers, and a cadre of a whole set of civilian positions that you can see before you. I'm going to give a quick overview by bureau. The most noticeable bureau is the Patrol Bureau. That's, these are the first responders to emergency situations, the folks you see in uniform in the black and white police cars. Their mission is to assess, enact, coordinate, and get resources when they respond to emergency incidents. They actively patrol areas in the city of Topeka. We have 155 full-time equivalents devoted to patrol. That's with 104 officers, 20 sergeants, six lieutenants, and 25 of those officers are still in the field training program. Our goals for this year are to continue evaluating, evaluation of best practice for police response. That's an example, is just being able to understand how crime works in an urban space and deploying limited resources in hot spots and knowing what to do in those hot spots. Assess and evaluate new technology for frontline response. We're always looking for the latest technology. An example would be the robot dog that some of you have seen that is able to deploy and utilize in certain scenes and situations where we don't want to put a living person in danger, such as maybe a person within a home that we could access through the dog and speak through that technology and record what's going on inside that structure. We also want to reduce vacant shifts through innovative return-to-work and retention projects, or some of our command staff came up with some great policies. Think of peer support, but now we develop a program of peer support for officers that are injured, navigating the return-to-work, the workers' compensation, and all those things that could be scary for an employee who doesn't understand the process. So we develop a policy, kind of making the peer support for people that are hurt, to help them navigate through the workers' compensation system as well. And the aim of that is to get people back to work quicker. And another goal is to have all officers trained to use Narcan, which is a valuable tool in the field. As of this year, to date, we have six uses of tourniquets, which is, actually, Narcan, 11 uses of Narcan this year that we've been able to intervene in the community to avoid an overdose of some type of opioid. Accomplishments for patrol this year, we've upgraded to the Axon Body-Worn Camera 4, the newest technology in body-worn camera. Every iteration has improved recording, improved microphones, improved cameras, and so on. So we just recently upgraded our staff to that. We've increased our medical response capabilities with IFAC training. That's individual first aid kits that each officer carries for sustaining life until more advanced care arrives. If you use an example of a tourniquet, we've been able to place six tourniquets on people so far this year, five for gunshot wound and one during an injury during an accident. Those tourniquets will sustain, help sustain life until we get a more advanced care on the scene. They're very useful. So our goal is to have everyone trained with IFAC and tourniquets throughout the year. Year-to-date, calls for service about 57,000, plus or minus. In 2024, we had about 58,000, so we're running about the same. Investigations, those are your detectives and some of those folks that follow up on calls for service and investigate crimes. Investigative focus is on state of Kansas statutory violations, that center on property crime offenses, and some of our other violent crimes, including children, crimes against children, sex offenses, and family violence. In that Investigations Bureau, we have full-time equivalents, number of 72. Our goals for this year are increasing the capability to investigate fatal and non-fatal shootings. We revamped our intelligence unit. We also will provide training next week from the National Policing Institute as part of my promise to partner with outside institutions to be able to bring increased training to not only to the police department but regionally on how to respond to fatal and non-fatal shootings, how to use the, how to investigate, how to use the technology we have in-house, and how to coordinate with federal and regional partners to investigate these shootings. And the overall goal for that is to reduce violent crime across the city. Some of the accomplishments for the Investigations Bureau, we've expanded the Bureau's capability for data-driven approach to reducing violent crime, just teaching them how to look at crime in an urban space and be data-driven, using hot spots, using their technology and all the tools that we have to better respond to incidents. We onboarded an online crime reporting solutions for local retailers and community partners. That's CopLogic. That's a way to keep our patrol officers in service and responding to certain types of calls, such as shoplifting calls from some of our retailers. We've empowered them to use that online reporting system to self-report those types of crimes, avoiding having to wait for a police officer to respond, and of course, saving time and keeping folks in service and available for priority calls. The Support Bureau delivers comprehensive law enforcement services that include managing property, records, and IT infrastructure while advancing public trust and behavioral health, community engagement, and school resource officers. Those are our SROs, our CPOs, community policing officers, our Behavioral Health Unit, our records, our PMU, all those folks that don't fall under investigations or patrol, we have under the Support Bureau. So we have 74 full-time equivalents in that Bureau. Their goals, our goals for the Support Bureau this year, or for 2026, are to innovate ways to engage with the community, the ability to expand Support Bureau units to accomplish the agency mission, which is part of our expansion with Intel and the Crime Ground Intelligence Center. And also, this year, we doubled the amount of community policing officers from three to six to be able to do that, and collaborating with new partners in the city as well, such as Civic and other groups that come to the table that want to partners with us to help solve community issues. Some of the accomplishments for 2025, our Citizens Academy continues to be full. The fall class began August 22nd, or begins August 22nd, and that's anticipated to be full as well. The 69th Police Academy began three and a half weeks ago. We started with 23 recruits in the Police Academy. It's the largest we've had at least eight years, nine years, to our recollection. There are still 23 in the class almost a month later, and we'll continue to support them and try to get them to the finish line. In case you're wondering, our current staffing is at 260 full-time equivalent sworn officers. Best-case scenario, if they all graduated, that'd be 283, getting close to our cap of 285. We'll continue to update you on their progress. We expanded, as I mentioned, the community police officers from three to six, added one more motorcycle officer to our cadre of five, and if my projections work well, we should be able to add two more motorcycle officers in the first quarter of next year. My goal is to double that unit in size. The Topeka community has made it clear to me that traffic is just as much an issue as violent crime is, and I'm responding to that concern as well. So at this point, I'm going to ask Director Shardine to come up and present the Property Maintenance Unit service overview.
Thanks, Chief. For the record, my name is John Shardine. I'm your Property Maintenance Director. The Property Maintenance Unit is under the umbrella of Topeka Police Department, where we've enjoyed its successful collaborative oversight since 2021. I am currently fully staffed with 19 full-time employees, which is down 14% from last year. The Property Maintenance Unit enforces the International Property Maintenance Code in addition to the Topeka Municipal Code regulating parking on unapproved surfaces. Later this year, we plan to expand our enforcement role to abandon vehicles on roadways and right-ofways. Our goal is to enhance the quality of life for residents and visitors through education, community outreach, and fair, equitable enforcement practices. We prioritize life and safety complaints related to structural integrity, illegal occupancy, electrical and plumbing hazards. Property Maintenance Unit works with property owners to resolve code violations within a reasonable timeframe and is prepared to take legal action if necessary, prosecute or end or abate the violation. I'm confident that my staff practices impartial enforcement, combat blight, identify deficient structures, and level playing fields specially in neighborhoods that may have experienced neglect and/or disinvestment. In 2024, PMU staff conducted 8,822 initial inspections involving 5,132 different properties. That's an increase of 27% from 2023 and 29% from 2022. The average time to resolve a code case city of Topeka is 20 days, and that's a decrease of 32% from 2023. My staff has also removed and/or cleaned 70 homeless encampments in the last two years. That includes 130 tons of trash and rubbish, and we invested 550 man-hours in that process. Goals for 2026 is continued transformation of culture property maintenance, improve the quality of structures and premises in the city of Topeka, and work with our community partners to enhance our community appearance. How are we successful doing this? We have a strong belief in department collaboration is critical in municipal operations, especially in complex, community-facing work like code enforcement, because no single department can fully address the layered needs of the city on its own. Successful collaboration improves efficiency, accountability, and outcomes for both city and residents. I'll turn it back to Chief.
That concludes our presentation. We'll open to any questions to anybody that's.
Thank you, gentlemen. Councilwoman Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple quick questions. The staffing study, I feel like there was one recently within the last 10 years. If there is a possibility, if you could let us know if that was true? I think there was, if I remember right.
We scoured the files. Besides, I think staffing studies are, I don't have a scientific, but they're good for a certain amount of time, depending on the current needs, population, crime, and things like that. I think it would be good to have one at least every three to five years if that made a difference.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that. The Lexipol, is that a one-time cost or an annual?
Yeah, forgive me for not straightening that out. We'll be able to cover the initial onboarding cost and the annual cost of this cycle. We're asking that to make an annual cost for an annual subscription.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Okay, back to the first slide about the removed positions. Are those ones that have already been removed or are going to be removed?
These are the proposed FY26 adjustments, so.
Because, and that's, just like animal control, I already know they're already backed up, and their supervisor is now taking the phone calls for animal control. So you're in essence, would be losing two animal control officers, and they're already backlog as it is and almost not able to even answer calls because they can't get to them. So that's, to me, scary. I'm not sure how staffed evidence and property is, and same with the records, but those, to me, are two very important areas that you overwork someone, and then the mistakes happen, and records don't get put where they're supposed to, or evidence isn't split where it's supposed to, and then we're having issues outside, like maybe in the courtroom, without having the proper documents or indoor evidence show up when it needs to. Property maintenance is another one, especially if we're updating and making new ordinances, it seems like every couple months when it comes to property maintenance. And if we're cutting a person, and as John put down, said earlier, that we're 32% better than we were, we're going to slide backwards, especially with all the new and updated ordinances we're going to be cracking down on. So those are some positions there that I would hate to see lost. I do like how some of them have been civilianized, like the TCALC. I do like the reporting system that you and I have talked about before, where it can put some of these places, such like Walmart or Target, to allow them to just self-report rather than having an officer out there for an extended period of time. That's, those are some areas that I just, it's, I think it's scary to lose somebody and also get overworked and mistakes happening, or in animal control, tired, overworked, and all of a sudden a mistake happens and someone gets injured very badly. So I'd like to relook at those positions and try to figure out a way to keep those because. because I've gone through, I went through the Citizens Academy this last cycle, and I learned a lot about the department, and those, to me, are, I believe, they're the people you really don't see, but they're very vital to the organization. And I just don't see how it's going to benefit the city, the police department, the citizens by losing those positions, short-term or long-term. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I weigh in on that?
So, I just would like to put the context of this. A number of these positions, we have held vacant since the beginning of the year. We talked about a hiring freeze at the beginning of the year. So, a lot of these positions that you see as being eliminated or proposed for reduction as part of the FY26 budget are positions that have been held vacant since the beginning of the year. So, we've been operating without them to this point. I will tell you, Deputy Mayor mentioned, like the animal, the animal control officer. I think as we were going through this process, there was a total of five or something, and two of them were vacant. We proposed to fill one and then eliminate the other one. So, we've kind of been, some of these things that you see before you are things that we've held vacant, and we've been operating since the beginning of the year in a number of cases without these positions being filled. So, I just want to set that context. There's some that, looking at the two, the two property maintenance, the property maintenance votes, one of those positions has been vacant 271 days, I think, as of last week. The other one was probably within the last 45 days or so. So, as we've made these proposed reductions, we, again, have been looking at those positions that have been vacant for an extended period of time. So, all these positions are vacant that you see before you.
Well, I understand the hiring freeze, and I understood that we were going to look at those, you were going to look at those positions, but if I was you, I'd sit down with the animal control and see how many phone, how many calls they answer every day, every week. And now, like I said, you've taken the supervisor out of the rotation because they're not answering the phone because 911 is not answering the animal calls anymore. So, and then the property maintenance, like I said, we're going to be ramping that up, you know, more and more, and that goes to the broken window theory of if you let an area go bad visually, it's going to go bad crime-wise. So, we reduce, and we're trying to make things better, but if we're going to reduce the enforcement of making things better, then we're just going to, in essence, almost invite more crime, which then can turn more officers on the road. So, it's one of those things, short-term, yes, it looks good. Long-term, let's take care of the property maintenance problem, and then that should, in turn, by the way society's acted for hundreds of years, an area looks good, it has less crime rate. So, animal control, they're just burnt out. They, we're going to lose some really good officers on that aspect of things because of all the phone calls they have to take. And I think we have really, really good animal control people right now that understand what they need to do and understand animals. And that's, to me, one of the biggest key parts right there is understanding how to interact and how to work with those animals. And if we just hire somebody because they just need a job and they don't understand it, now we're looking at issues long-term there also. So, I think those are definitely two positions that should be looked at about filling them regardless because of the workload that they have in front of them.
Ken?
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Hofer.
Okay. I mainly have a request. So far this year, we have demolished one house. We have a long list, and I had a chance to talk to John and Jerry this weekend, and there are five houses that are basically caught in the court, and they just can't quite get them to the point where they need to be demolished. I'm sure we have the budget for demolishing several of those. I'd request that we, instead of rolling that money over into the general fund, I'd like to see that money encumbered for demolitions into next year. It's not our fault that they've been held off, but if we let that money roll over, we're going to be behind the eight ball, and we're going to have more houses that get backed up. So, I'd like to look at keeping that money in their budget so we can keep demolishing houses and gain some ground. I've got one in my neighborhood, most of you haven't heard about it, and it's the first one I've encountered. And I didn't realize we had that money that we're waiting to be demolished. So, this year, I'm going to make that request, if we could look at that and make more of a dent.
So, PMU has a recurring line item for demolitions in their budget. So, I mean, it's not like the money goes away. If they don't spend it, it'll roll down into our fund balance, but I mean, PMU has a recurring...
I want to make sure it stays there.
Absolutely.
So, we can get more done next year, and hopefully we'll get figured out how to get some of them moving forward.
Yes, ma'am.
Because that's, it's become a recurring problem, and we just had a house that had a really bad fire that was down the list, that's now moved up the list. And I want to make sure we get rid of that one, I think is pretty much a big hazard right now. And I don't know how long it takes from the fire to demolition. So, I don't want to take any chances of that one staying standing. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilman Duncan.
Yeah, I'm just going to reiterate your request. I haven't seen it yet, but I know you're busy. At some point, I would still like to see a cost analysis of what it would take to have someone on every shift who's part of the crisis intervention team, who's a healthcare professional or that's in mental health care. I know we've talked about that, whether those would be, so that maybe more in-house, every shift, someone who's always available, since that's not available to us now, not through faults of our own necessarily, but through the grants we get or don't get and working with Filo. But I would still like to see that cost analysis as we look at what positions we're filling and not filling for the 26 budget. So, thank you.
Councilwoman Vadeviakala.
Thank you, Mayor. How many homes do we currently have on the condemnation list?
Condemned properties, I'm not sure. I can tell you that we have five that are teetering on the very last stage of the demolition process. So, five.
There's, yeah. And I need to understand, and I'm sure we've talked about this at PHS, but we've talked about everything at PHS Committee, is that that process might be a good educational component, just something very tight to come to the governing body, because I think we all understand in the lower-number districts, there is a heck of a lot more boarded vacant houses. What is that process, you know, before condemnation occurs, you know, and just something really tight so we can understand, because increasingly, at least in my district, I see more and more boarded-up houses. And so, I think it would be a good educational component for all of us, maybe even a handy-dandy, you know, or not card, but half-page.
Sure.
You know, something printoutable that we, as councilpeople, can carry around with this, I think would be beneficial. And Councilman Duncan, what did you just, what did you just mention right now? Can I ask him that?
Here's a CIT.
So, one of the things I have asked for was to see if we brought them in-house as opposed to relying on external.
Okay, okay.
And what that would look like for every shift.
Refresh, refresh. Thank you. And, you know, Chief and I just had a conversation last week, and for years now, but way before you were here, have been reiterating the importance of establishing a pilot project, something like the cahoots on the West Coast. Keep getting a lot of lip service. I'm not saying from you. I know it takes time. I know it takes money, but we also understand that as we look at more modern policing, what you and I have talked about is that that load that comes onto police for being the frontline mental health, right? None of us want that for, that continued load on our men and women, right? We also don't want the continued load of being front and center for the homelessness issue and dealing with all of that, but they are. That's just the bottom line of where we're at. But I keep thinking that we cannot stop having these conversations in this particular area when you guys are up here to continue to push for something like cahoots, which takes law enforcement unless it's an extreme circumstance, takes them out of that frontline mental health component. But of course, even with the pilot program, there is dollars attached to that. Thank you, Mayor.
John, the issue of demolition of properties, I've spoken to the city manager previously saying about that. I agree with Councilwoman Hofer that whatever we can do to let people know what that process is so that there's some, you know, there's so much expressed frustration that it doesn't happen overnight, and there are laws that we have to follow and all the procedures and so forth. But without having that information, citizens get a little frustrated about it, and I'll be honest with you, so do I. I drive around, I see them too. I've given him addresses of places that I would like to see addressed, and I'm sure he shares them with you. So, it's a good suggestion that for all of us to know exactly what the process is, but to keep pushing for it, because whenever there's an opportunity to increase the removal of some of those properties to encourage infill and other opportunities, it would really help these neighborhoods. So, I agree with that need. The CIT, as Councilman Duncan mentioned, is a good idea. We used to have, I think, maybe a little more focus on it in the reports that we would get from previous chiefs, because it is an important piece, I think. I know there's been a struggle to make it happen on all three shifts, but I know from having worked down there in all three shifts, it comes about when you least expect it. So, having somebody at least, maybe if not on duty, on call, some kind of on-call situation, that's the kind of investment, I think, even if it moves into an overtime situation. I don't think we'll be abused, but we'll be used by those officers who see that need, because almost every report we get, if not locally, nationally, where we have shooting incidents and so forth, there's always the tag, there was a report that the suspect may have had mental issues. So, it's a common thing that we have to address as much as we can. So, any effort to make that available on all three shifts would be a high priority, I think, for the city. I want to commend you for the activities of the police department that have shown a responsiveness to the violent incidences that do occur in Topeka. It seems like there's a quick response and resolution, at least in identifying suspects and arrests. So, I think that's important for us to keep that really high focus. For a long time, I had thought about, and this was discussed before, having a closer communication between investigating officers from crimes reported, detectives, and the street officers who take the initial report, so that there's more communication to help that information pass to them in even a quicker and more accurate way. So, I would encourage that as part of some kind of training piece that you might have at the academy. I know that everybody's bound by time and workload, but the better you can share the information, it works out better. That's kind of the crux of community policing. If the guys on the street have that firsthand information and convey it to detectives and work together to investigate the issue rather than handing it off to the next division, I think that gets things addressed more quickly. So, I would encourage that, and that could be part of a consideration for some of your training.
Thank you. Those are all great suggestions. As I mentioned, next week, we're going to start with some of that training with the National Policing Institute coming in, and we're going to have actually regional training, not only just our officers and our staff, all the way up to me, we're going to get some training on how to, especially with regards to violent crime, how to communicate that up and down, how to investigate it, how to work not in silos, but work together, increase information, putting out information back and forth. And that's going to, it's going to be, it's going to be a good process here, especially when we can do it regional with our federal partners, with our, from anywhere from Manhattan to Lawrence to KCK, having that regional training so we're all on the same page on how to collaborate and communicate effectively. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It leads me to believe I'm maybe going in the right direction. I want to address a little bit with the Behavioral Health Unit cahoots model. I'm on record as saying that I'm supportive of, both models are effective, they're just different. What we have in effect right now is a Behavioral Health Unit that's a co-responder model. You have a police officer and a civilian responder. If you, the cahoots model takes the policing completely out of it, which I believe is effective as well. It's a retool of what we would do now. If there's sentiment within the community to do a pilot, we can like have and a unit, a cahoots unit, we could look into that. But if we want to switch from a co-responder to a non-sworn cahoots, which is, cahoots is crisis assistance helping out on the streets, which is the acronym for that. So, it's a longstanding program where you have one crisis counselor and one medical technician working together, through a well-vetted program where they respond to calls. They vet the mental health call to see if it's appropriate for them to respond to. Majority of the times, they can respond without the assistance of a uniformed officer. So, I am on record for being open to that as well. It's just kind of how do we tool what we have now? My business manager has some information here for us. We recently, why don't you speak for that, for how much we raised the price?
We, the council approved for us to increase what was budgeted for the co-responder program in 2025, so we increased that up to $200,000. We signed the updated contract with Filo late April, and currently, they have the second shift co-responder filled, the weekend slash third shift one filled, and they're actively trying to recruit to fill the first shift position. The increase in funding allowed for them to hire, offer higher salaries to try to recruit since they were having some recruiting issues.
And that's what the current co-responder model, which is the information we're giving to you.
Councilwoman Vadeviakala.
Thank you, Mayor. That is really heartening to hear. If you pursue that further about, you know, wanting to get community input, I will help whatever way you need in my district to set up meetings, anything that is needed to get community input. I mean, I know the first thing people always think about is maybe surveys, but I think that face-to-face time, which PD is trying to establish more, and look about, look at, we understand it doesn't mean that it happens right this second, but as we are evolving into these processes that you've been talking about, you know, I think people are probably hungry for some dialogue on that, because we understand how much police are actually that frontline face, often come, not saying that it's not going to change, but often come from that process, that mode of escalation rather than de-escalation, and I believe that you will try to change that up. But again, if you are serious about that, I'm serious with helping in any way that I can, Chief.
I look forward to maybe some type of community with your help, Councilwoman, some kind of working group or, for lack of a better word.
And we could even see about NOMI. I mean, maybe NOMI, you know, the National Alliance for Mental Illness.
Right.
There's a NOMI chapter here.
Right.
In Topeka. I mean, get some insight from them. I don't think meeting just to meet is never a good thing, right? We want something to happen, something to evolve from it, but yeah, I'm down. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, thank you for your presentation, and I want to thank you, Chief, and all your staff for what they do every day, and the same goes for you, John. Both of you have tough jobs. You're very responsive to the requests that come to your office, and I appreciate all the hard work that you're doing.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We've got a lot to get through, and I'm hesitant to take a break, to be honest with you. I'd like to be able to keep working through this, because we have people still also that want to speak, have public comment, and it just puts it off even longer. So, I would encourage those who need to take a... So I would encourage those who need to take a break, take a break, and we'll proceed with the presentations. Chief, good to see you.
Good to be back.
Good to see you too. Mr. Mayor?
Council, Mayor, City Manager, Interim Chief, Fire Chief Chad Longstaff. It's good to be back. Seven months of retirement is getting kind of boring. So. I've been on one week and two days, and Deputy Chief Anthony Stanifer's been keeping this process going. So he's going to present the budget, and we've got staff back there. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Mayor Governor Body, thank you for this opportunity to go through our budget with you. Topeka Fire Department mission statement is the Topeka Fire Department is committed to protecting lives, preserving property, and serving with pride through unwavering excellence in fire suppression, rescue, emergency medical services, proactive fire prevention, and impactful public education. Fiscal year '26 adjustments is purchasing replacement air compressors to refill self-contained breathing apparatus bottles. So currently, we have two station air compressors that refill our air packs, and those two compressors are coming near end of life. Reducing our FTEs by two, which is a training officer in a division chief position. Vacancy credit for seven entry-level firefighters and one battalion chief, and then a proposed fire station relocation in the '26 CIP, which aims to replace aging infrastructure and improve response times, which you'll get to see us again here in a little bit for Briefly, this is suggested fire fee schedule from our Prevention Division, and you can look at these, there are several here to describe for '26 fee adjustments. Our fire operations are sometimes called suppression. Operations encompasses fire suppression, rescue, medical services, and hazardous materials response. Some of our accomplishments for this year, we have developed and implemented a comprehensive mayday policy. That's for safety and accountability during emergency operations. A mayday is basically when a firefighter goes down or is unable to extricate themselves from where they're at, they get separated from their crew, they declare a mayday. That's also been implemented through the entire county. We performed a battalion chief training for senior captains, and we also have members right now that are in our Task Force Two that are enrolling in Task Force One. The difference between Task Force Two and One is Two is in the state, we're the northeast region, and Task Force One is out of state. They sent Task Force One members throughout the state down to Texas for the flooding that occurred down there. Some of our goals, continue recruiting and retention to ensure workforce that's more reflective of the community as a whole, and as you are all aware, we have Camp Courage that we take great pride in having every June, and that we also have an explorers post that meets every month. Next slide is the fire prevention. The Fire Prevention Division safeguards the community through expert fire investigations, comprehensive annual occupancy inspections, and impactful fire, public fire education. Some of our accomplishments for '25 is our new fire inspection software that we're using that's allowing our inspectors to be more efficient out on the street when they're doing their inspections. Joint apartment inspection, so we partnered with Property Maintenance Division for inspections in apartment buildings. And also, we've completed the fire safety education programs in all of USD elementary For our '26 goals is to once again get into all of the elementary schools in 501, which can sometimes be difficult, but our fire, our public education officer, Ryan Neal, does an excellent job communicating with the schools. And complete inspection of all apartment complexes within interior hallways. Next slide is EMS division. So EMS, Emergency Medical Services with a focus on expanding advanced life support care or ALS care. Some accomplishments is we've completed AEMT training for seven personnel, and we've also opened a seventh ALS company located at Station 11 in North Topeka. Along with that, we're, the goals for '26 is to add another ALS company somewhere in the city. And what we do is we generally evaluate the need. We have several companies out west. We wanted to get one in, we have one downtown there at Station Three. We wanted to get one into North Topeka, and then we'll evaluate where the next company will be once our next group of AMTs graduate. Next slide is fire training. Training empowers firefighters with advanced skills and depth knowledge of firefighting tactics and safety protocols. Some of our accomplishments are hazmat technicians, so we have nine personnel trained and certified in hazmat technician. That'll bring us up, that brings us up to about 80 personnel in the entire department. That's over a third of our department. We have a Task Force Two team for the region that's hazmat out at Station Eight, and if you know anything about hazmat scenes, it's going to require more than just six people to be able to remedy the situation. The more personnel that we have that are hazmat technicians, the better off we are to be able to remedy our own situations here in town. That hazmat team also responds to the northeast region and will respond to the state if needed or requested. We have a new reporting system called NERIS. The old required mandated reporting system used to be called INFERS. It is now new, and it's called NERIS. It's with the federal government, and we got ahead of the game on NERIS. We were actually mandated to have it in service and going by the end of the year, and we got it activated, and all of our personnel are using it now since July 1st. They have done an excellent job. We have tried our best to prepare them for all that and to be able to report more appropriately. The new NERIS system allows us to do a lot of data analysis just by opening our page online for Topeka Fire Department. Training hours, so we've coordinated delivery of over 60,000 hours of fire and EMS training to our department personnel, and we're hosting classes from KUFRTI, KU Fire Rescue Training Institute. It's our belief that we should be the hub or the example of the training that should go on for firefighting, and we have established a great rapport with KU and being able to host a lot of classes that they teach in our academy. And so we'll be using, we'll be pulling in personnel from other departments around the area to be able to come to Topeka Fire Department to do their training. For goals for '26, increase hands-on training to TFD personnel in both fire and EMS. We've been able to help our EMS folks learn more ALS information. When our crews go into a scene and it's an ALS situation, our ALS person is not the only one that's going to be doing the work. Our EMS personnel need to be helping them. They need to know what that equipment is to be able to hand it to that ALS person and work together as a team so we can save lives. And so we want to upgrade that more, we want to produce more of that training and be able to help our personnel be successful out in the field. And that's the end of our presentation. Stand for any questions.
Councilman Banks?
Well, it's nice to see you guys trying to fill in for me. I know it's been difficult.
That's pretty hard. It's been rough, sir.
I have a couple of questions. I was thinking as you were talking, Chief, about prevention, and I'm wondering if you actually fit your private person with the equipment for firefighting? Do they actually, do you give them firefighting an air pack? Do you give them the?
All of our specialty personnel have firefighting gear. They will, last year, they went through some training with our operations personnel, and we're, we're planning on doing more of that to help keep them prepared. At any given time, the fire chief has the ability to pull our special operations people, our specialty people, as we call them, that would be inspectors, public education, and training officers out into the field.
I understand. I went back three times myself. My next question would be, what if we actually had a juvenile fire setter? What would we do?
I would say we would spend time talking to them and trying to get down to their level and try to get them to understand the importance of fire safety. That's one of the great things about our public education officer, he gets into all the 501 elementary schools to try to help prevent that from even happening. Go ahead.
And I have additional to go on to that, Councilmember Banks. For the record, Alan Stallfire, Marshal, we do work with the Juvenile Fire Setter Coalition that runs out of the Kansas City metro area. So we work very closely with Corey Sands, he happens to be the chair of that, he's the fire marshal from Shawnee, Kansas. Due to our very low volume of juvenile fire setters that we have here, it's very difficult for us to maintain a good active program. So we partner with that very active program throughout the Kansas City metro area to help make referrals and find a relevant safe environment for those juvenile fire setters with their well-established programs.
Those programs are okay. My concern is how would you know if we have a fire setter in our city? I know they're here. See, here's where you'd find them, you would find them in the classes. You'd have a system that would allow the teachers, principals, other people that deals with the school system to report them to you. So having left there, I know that you do not have an active way of curtailing that activity at this point.
So, Councilmember Banks, we do regularly receive referrals from multiple avenues inside of the county partners that we have, city and county partners. We have never turned down a referral, and we've been open to any communications with 501 schools. We've been very diligent at working to build the bridges with 501 post-COVID. Obviously, there were some very serious challenges that occurred during that time, and then getting back in the schools has been quite an effort, and I must commend my public education officer, Ryan Neal, for doing an incredible job of getting it back into those schools. And we are always open to any suggestions and partnerships with those schools. You know, if they need to refer kids to us, we're happy to help.
I understand when you were there that that program has went down, and we need to get that thing back up. Maybe we ought to bring you back. But yeah, and we're going to work on that, and so, yeah.
And we are working on more training for our public education officer through our ISO review that we had a couple of years ago. It was expressed to us that that needed to be a piece of the public education officer position, and so we're increasing his train that's specifically toward what he does.
I'm thinking, I noticed you don't have the fire safety house anymore, which would, in my days on the fire department, would culminate the end where people would have an opportunity to practice egress from a fire. And if you take that component out of the education phase, it leaves kids with that gap, they don't know what to do.
We, I understand that that's one of the things that we need to start pushing again. With that said, I mean, we feel it too, so we're going to start working on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And to clarify one last thing, we actually do have our fire safety house, it's been under some maintenance, and it has been utilized. So that is still an asset that we have. We actually have a newer one. I know Councilman Banks had a significantly older one, so we were blessed to get a grant and get a new one, so, thank you.
Councilman Duncan?
This was my original question. Why are we only engaged with 501?
We don't.
They're not the only school that we, they're not the only public entity that we engage with, but it is our main focus to hit the 501 schools.
I mean, do we engage though in the other three school districts that we have that touch the city?
Modern Day.
I'm talking about the three public, I mean, we've got Seaman, we've got Washburn Rule, you know, we've got.
So we actually do do training with Seaman Schools and with Washburn Rules, they're the only ones that have a physical grade school within our location, within the city of Topeka, and yes, we do work with them as well. We do focus on 501 due to the majority of the LMI students there, and that's definitely our target audience that we look forward to. So, but yes, we are open, and we work with the parochial schools, the private schools, but just our big metric that we track is 501.
Okay. I want to talk about the hazmat. First of all, did we ever, one time we were talking about purchasing a new vehicle or upgrading the current vehicle. What happened with that?
We do have a new vehicle for our hazmat truck.
Right, and we paid for all of it?
We didn't pay for the whole amount, we did receive funding from the Northeast Regional Council for $250,000, I believe.
Of, what was it, a million bucks or something? Give or take.
1.1.
Okay. So that unit serves both the state when needed and then that region, correct? And you mentioned that, but I just want to verify, okay.
Correct, and the city.
Right, right, but I mean, we're also available because we're the capital city, the capital's here, right? We assist the state if they have an issue, and then we assist that region.
Correct.
Do we receive any additional funds from any of those entities, whether it's the federal government or the state of Kansas, either for ongoing maintenance of that program, purchase of equipment, even just helping fund that piece of the program at all?
If we are, if we are activated by the request to the state fire marshal's office, then we keep track of the expenses to be able to respond from personnel to apparatus, and we do receive a recoupment of those funds, depending on the scale and how long it's going on.
Do we know if we have ever had conversations with our federal delegation or the state and just said, hey, we are happy to be here for you, glad we can do it, but there's a cost to us maintaining a certain standard so we can serve this area beyond just the city and just see if there's, they don't want to pay for anything any more than we do, I know, but I mean, have we ever had those conversations? Because I'm happy to participate in opening up those conversations. We're still going to just tell us no, right? That's the worst thing. Best is they're going to say, hey, we hear you, you're right, we should, we should probably help the cause.
Very true.
So I would just throw that out there as something that I'd like to see us kind of work on for that specific program, because it is expensive. I mean, that stuff costs a lot, I know. It all costs a lot, but I know that is very specialized equipment, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll throw something out there to you, Chief Longstaff.
Yes.
So we used to have these open houses for all of our constituents to come and see the apparatus, to see what you guys do, and educate them, and it just kind of dwindled away. I would like to see that brought back up again, you know.
You got it.
I got it, is that what I heard on the record?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're going to have, we're going to frame something like that.
I appreciate that. You know, I've known Chad.
Popcorn soda.
Popcorn soda.
Hot dogs.
There you go.
Yeah.
Chad likes to party. I've known him since he was in middle school.
He wasn't a cop.
For great, great.
Yeah.
So, and I know it used to be at different stations, like different nights, and then we'd have one down at Threes, you know, one, one big one, and we've kind of gotten away from that. But that was also a time to celebrate some of our brothers that have fallen and stuff like that, and we just, we just got away from that. So I will have the same conversation with you as I did the last, Chief, because I think that's important. And I think it's really important when the public, when they come in and they see and they get to talking about those apparatuses, and they get to seeing how much they cost and, you know, the living and all of the money that we pour into that and their taxpayer money, you know, they, they don't know all of that, but they do know this. They're upset when that truck does not hit their front door when it's needed. And so I just always, you know, been through a few chiefs, and I just know the importance of selling ourselves, and I think we've got to do that, and I think you understand that, Chief. And last but not least, we, you know, I will continue at this corner pushing my smoke detectors, and I hope that you will join me with that.
You got it.
You got one in your house?
Oh, yes, I do.
Okay, you don't have 15?
I got eight kids.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm going to ask a question, gentlemen. It's been a while since I've been active with the police department and fire department. Back when I was there, we did a lot of training on incident command. Is that system still in place, and does that training still continue with the police department?
Absolutely. We are actually having conversations about another get-together training event between the two of us that may happen in the mall. We did one last year at the zoo. We are trying to work through a lot of these things to be able to prepare. We are trying to work through a lot of these things to be able to prepare together for a real incident. The incident command system that we run is not something that normally the officers run or work through, and we work it all the time. Doesn't matter what the call is. We run it some sort of, or fashion of, incident command. So, we're able to have conversations with them and work with them and have explanations to why we do certain things the way we do and how that incident command system should look. So, we do absolutely.
And, Mr. Mayor, we're also updating our continuity of operations plans, which are kind of like our emergency management plans. And so, all of our departments are updating those, not just Police and Fire, but all of our departments. Assistant City Manager Moore is taking the lead on that, but those are exactly the types of things. How do we coordinate on events, whether it be a natural disaster or something else? That way, you know, we're not trying to figure it out during the event, but to actually have the advanced training and, and again, ensuring that all of our departments are coordinating on those efforts.
That's good to hear, especially those COT plans usually end up collecting dust somewhere and not getting reva, reviewed on a regular basis, but, yeah, because they're sometimes pretty thick, and there's a lot of detail in there. I'm glad to hear that. So, good. I think that it's a good system to have in place because it helps coordinate the services that will be necessary at a moment's notice most often. So, any further questions? Well, again, like with the, your comrades, the Police Department, I want to thank you both for your service, and thank you, Chief, for coming back to help us out right now in the interim. And I appreciate all the work your staff does, and thank you again for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Connor?
Good evening. We just rolling into this? Okay. Save the best for last, I suppose. All right. So, my name's Karan Thadani. I'm the Administrative Judge for the Topeka Municipal Court. We continue to run one of the top three biggest municipal courts in the state comprised of three divisions, the Judicial Division, the Probation Division, and then we have the Court Clerk's Office. Throughout the week, we go through about 25 different various court dockets, everything from trials to sentencings, domestic violence docket, DUI docket, kinds of cases we adjudicate, driving under the influence, all your traffic accidents that occur within the city, criminal trespass, unlawful camping, theft, domestic battery first offense, domestic battery second offense, harassment by telephone, violation of PFAs, et cetera. If it is a ticket written by a TPD officer within the city limits and it is not a felony, it is committed to municipal court. That said, I couldn't do my job without my staff, so I'd sit here and give a shout-out to them. We have a group of dedicated people that could probably be making better money doing other things. It's not an easy job. No one's really happy when they come to court. And then I think it's important, every time I get an opportunity to say this, municipal courts are important. For the average person, it's the court that you're going to first go to, whether it's a conflict with your neighbor, a car accident, a speeding ticket, and so, how we treat that person is, it lasts them a lifetime, whether it was fair, whether it was just, or whether it was equitable. For 2026, our big adjustment, and I'll kind of keep it short, is e-ticating. It is now going to be 2026, and the capital city is still writing paper tickets. The good news is, we'll be able to fund most of this through my technology fund, about $130,000, and moreover, TPD may be able to get some grant money from the Department of...
Transportation?
Department of Transportation to maybe cover some of that. The things that this will improve, efficiency, currently, we're manually entering these tickets, efficiency for officers to be able to take a picture of a license with their cellphone, efficiency for my staff to not have to read officer's handwriting and then put it into the court system. With a digital ticket, you write a ticket, by morning time, it's in my court system. They have a court date. It takes away a lot of unnecessary business in my clerk's office. So, I'm looking forward to it. It's with Tyler Technologies. If we can get this done, hopefully, by the end of next year, we can rule this out, and it'll be very good for the city. I think it'll lower operational costs, improve service to the public, and overall, it's just a faster and a more reliable way to do business. Some of our accomplishments, well, let me go back to the goals. As the body knows, jail costs continue to go up. About two years ago, domestic violence landed on the lap of the Legal Department and the Municipal Court, and I'm very proud of the work we've done to create the program we have. I think it's a very robust program that is working. I continue to see domestic violence cases go down, which is a good thing. We've created additional domestic violence dockets to help with those jail costs, because a lot of the people that we're holding seem to be out on bond where they pick up another case, and at that point, they become a risk to the offender, a risk to the community, and we have no choice but to leave them in jail. Probation Department, they know how to efficiently manage a large and consistent caseload. They average about 135 clients per month, and we monitor about 35 defendants on bond supervision. I don't know how many other municipal courts in the state that are doing that, so I'm pretty proud of the work that they do. Property maintenance, I know that's a big issue for the body. We have used the LLC ordinance and issued judgments in over 50 cases, and I can tell you that works, because when they don't show up to the code docket and they get put on a show cause docket, they usually call the chief prosecutor and say, "Hey, I never got this notice. Can we please just move it back to the code docket?" So, in that sense, it is working. Mental Health Court is another one of my, something that's close to my heart. I've been with the city for nine years, and I've been involved with that program the whole time, and we just know mental health treatment is cheaper than putting someone in jail. It gives people a second chance, and I think I've brought some graduates to this body before to hear the stories, and I plan to do that again here in the future. Other than that, the budget is fairly static. Majority of it is personnel. You can see the increase in public defender contract, although that's just going off of the old contract, correct? It was 195. We went up to 325, and now there's a 5% increase for next year, correct? All right, well, I would stand for questions. That's what I got for tonight.
We should have put you first, Your Honor. Deputy Mayor?
Now, there are some, the rising costs of keeping someone incarcerated in Shawnee County Jail has been something that's been a concern for a little while. Is there any offenses you could see where we could do someone's, do like a catch and release mentality, where it's, they book and they're, they're out and they're not actually put in the cell, that would help lower costs on that aspect of things?
That's a good question. The way I would answer it is, at this time, we do everything possible to lower jail costs. So, most people don't know that 365 days a year, one of the judges from this court does what's called a jail call. So, every arrest and every arrest on a bench warrant, so new arrest and arrests on a bench warrant, is reviewed every morning about 7:30, and ethically, we try to release the people we can release. Moreover, during business hours of the court, which is 7:30 to 4:30, if TPD comes in contact with a bench warrant, rather than taking those defendants to jail, they actually bring them to this courthouse. And we also do our best to allow those people to sign a notice to appear. I have considered maybe farming out to other jails are offenders that are serving longer sentences, but there is a lot of things that go into that. Right now, with Shawnee County, we're paying $96 a day, and that includes health costs, and you're not going to really find that anywhere. Moving defendants to a smaller jail in a smaller community, you've got to worry about the transportation, the safety of the officers, the operational costs of there. I think domestic violence, an uptick in mental health-related crimes, an uptick in drug-related crimes, it's sort of the nature of the beast at this point.
So, I know Shawnee County Jail is working on their mental health unit. Recently, if I heard right, they're kind of putting the brakes on that for a little while, or are they not doing as much before what they were doing with that?
I don't think I'm in a position to answer that. I haven't heard that information, Councilmember.
All right. And then how much do we do with, for example, is the VA? You know, we know this person's a veteran, we know they're a mental health person, and instead of having them sit there, taking them over to the VA, do we, do we look at those scenarios every day, or do we have to wait until they get a assessment through the jail?
We're constantly reviewing dockets to see what offenders would qualify for mental health services, and if you actually look on my alternative sentencing court pamphlet, there is a VA staff member that is supposed to be on the team. However, for the last three to four years, due to staffing, that person has been unable to attend on a weekly basis. And so, VA used to be a lot more involved with our program and the mental health side, but re, just recently, it hasn't been so much.
And I've noticed that myself. It's almost like a reluctance of their part to say, "Well, you guys have them, you guys take care of them," rather than doing, doing the right thing and taking someone that is in a mental health crisis and, and putting them in the hospital rather than the jail, that they've had that mentality of, of not wanting to participate in those scenarios.
And I've talked to her. She's responsible for all of eastern Kansas, and there's one body that can only be so many places, so it's not throwing anyone under the bus. It's just kind of the nature of where we're at with staffing at this point.
I, I, I believe it's more of the mentality of the VA, not necessarily that one person or that one department, but just the VA in general. Thank you.
Any other questions? We thank you, Your Honor. I think you're doing, doing a fine job. I appreciate especially all the work that you're doing in prosecuting the domestic violence cases.
Appreciate that.
Your report that they're going down, I think that's good to hear.
I, I would stand by that with the number, so thank you for that.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, one thing I have to add is, next week, we'll be reviewing public works, utilities, and planning, and then if there's any questions on the presentations that didn't come up tonight, we'll just shoot them over to me, and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Josh. Councilman Doherty?
Mayor, we've got quite a list of folks signed up to speak. We have two executive sessions. I'm just questioning whether there's an opportunity to, it seems like the fire station discussion is very important. It's already past my bedtime, so my mental ability to absorb the information that I know is going to be presented is minimized at this point. I wonder if we could entertain the option of pushing that to next week?
I don't have any objection to it, and I think it's considered to the people that are here right now and for the governing body as well. So, if there's no objection, we will ask the clerk to move that to a different agenda.
Would you like to move that to next week?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Thank you. Good suggestion, sir. Okay, so we have a public comment. We do have quite a few people signed up. Angel Romero has been patiently waiting. Angel, good to see you.
Hi there. Okay, thank you. How are you?
Good evening. I'm glad we didn't need to bring sleeping bags. Thank you for, for that. Lots of, lots of good things going on, though, which speaks to part of why I'm here tonight. So, Mayor, governing body, my name is Angel Romero. I am glad to be here tonight on behalf of the Topeka Voter Collaborative. For those who aren't familiar, TVC is a nonpartisan collection of individuals and organizations who are focused really on one goal, which is to empower Shawnee County current and future voters by encouraging informed civic participation and active participation in local elections. And there are several TVC members that are here in the back of the room with me today. As I know everyone in this room knows, and hopefully the folks watching and listening to us tonight know, we have a big election coming up this fall, as we're electing a new mayor, as well as elections for city council members in our odd-numbered districts. So, tonight, TVC is officially excited to kick off our Top City 25 voting initiative. We want to invite you all, as well as our community, to participate with us. This initiative calls on our community to raise the voter turnout percentage in this fall's mayoral election to 25%. So, that is a 5% increase from our last turnout in the last mayoral election of 20%. So, a 5% increase, which would equate to about 4,000 new voters participating in this year's mayoral election. Now, if you're like me, 25% still sounds really, really low, but to give you some context, 25% would actually put us higher than the mayoral turnout for elections in New York City, Dallas, Houston, and Miami, to name just a few. The good news is, we have every reason to believe that we can do this. In fact, if you look at the last three mayoral elections in the city of Topeka, voter turnout has actually increased successfully in each election. So, 25% does not seem outside the realm of possibility, and as evidenced by tonight, there is no shortage of big issues before this body. Everything from economic development to quality of life, infrastructure repair, and more is more important than ever for our citizens to make their voice heard. And after all, we are the capital of Kansas, so if anyone is going to take the lead in civic participation, voter turnout, it should be us. We know it's going to take an army of individuals to make this happen, so we have some tools and resources to assist people with that. We have a toolkit for candidates, for individuals, and for organizations to use to help promote this effort. It includes social media graphics, sample emails, and resources for voter education and to help spread the word about this initiative. The toolkit can be accessed at bit.ly/topcity25. So, bit.ly/topcity25, or where people can find all of those sample resources, and we look forward to spreading the word more about those resources. And just to make things a little more fun, we are also working with our friends at the Voter Network of Kansas to challenge other cities in the state of Kansas to also raise their voter turnout by 5%. So, we look forward to Topeka leading the way in that effort, and we look forward to you all joining us in that. You're going to hear in just a moment from another fellow TVC member of my, Alyssa Staley, who's going to share more about ways that you all can support this challenge and encourage your fellow citizens to join us. But we are looking forward to a fun fall, getting people engaged in voting in the elections that we think are some of the most important elections that people will participate in this fall. So, we look forward to talking to you more about that in the weeks and months to come. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Angel. Alyssa Staley?
Hello. So often, when we hear about something, we immediately ask, "Well, what is so-and-so going to do about that?" We care enough to wish the situation was different, but we're quick to look around and try to figure out who's responsible and then blame them for not acting instead of saying, "What can I do about that?" To succeed in turning out more than 25% of Topeka voters in the November local elections, we need to empower those people who care enough to wish that things were different to take action. And when people ask, "Well, what can I do about that?", Top City 25, the Topeka Voter Collaborative, will have answers for them, including using Vote 411 to research candidates and all the toolkit things that Angel was mentioning. I cannot rattle off that address as well. As current city council members, you can help. To start, you can encourage individuals to make a voting plan for the general election. Some of you are also campaigning. Try not to make eye contact. And from your positions of influence in our community, you can encourage other community leaders to promote voting in local elections. I'm not here to tell you this is your responsibility and ask, "What are you going to do about it?" There, this isn't something that only you in city council solves. We're here to help. Topeka Voter Collaborative and Top City 25 isn't endorsing a particular candidate, and these local elections are already nonpartisan. This is an effort for each of us to help in our own unique ways, like, for example, this morning, I made all these buttons. Because a colorful free button makes an abstract idea just a little bit more real sometimes. I don't know if I'm allowed to give you buttons, but I'm just going to take this to the clerk in case you can choose some for yourself. You can have as many as you want. I want people to feel like Topeka is a thing that we're all making happen, that Topeka is something that we're making better for each other. Topeka isn't something forced upon them or a place they're trapped. I want to invite people, sorry, I get emotional, you know. I want to invite people into the doing of Topeka... I don't know if I'm allowed to give you buttons, but I'm just going to take this to the clerk. In case you can choose some for yourself. You can have as many as you want. I want people to feel like Topeka is a thing that we're all making happen. That Topeka is something that we're making better for each other. Uh, Topeka isn't something forced upon them, uh, or a place they're trapped. I want to invite people, sorry, I get emotional, you know. Um, I want to invite people into the doing of Topeka, and include them in making it better. And I believe that one part of helping more people learn about local government and, um, participate, and learning what you do here and how you do it, is to make their choice for leadership known by voting in the local elections in November. Uh, being part of Topeka Voter Collaborative helps me find ways to be more effective and find more people who like colorful buttons. Uh, in the previous local elections for the odd-numbered city council districts in 2021, voter turnout among registered voters was 15 percent in District One. In District Three, it was only 13 percent. It was 15 percent in District Five. In District Seven, it was 24 percent, and it was 21 percent in District Nine. So we know we won at least 4,000 additional voters in this election compared to four years ago. So if you split that evenly between all the odd-numbered districts, that means each of them should turn out an additional 800 voters to meet that goal of 25 percent. But we each need to do something to increase voter turnout, whether you're a current candidate or not. So, um, since voters in even-numbered districts have the opportunity to vote in the mayoral race this November, if, if the even-numbered city council members help increase their voter turnout in their districts, then we each need about 450 additional voters in each district compared to 2021. Now that you've heard this challenge, be on the lookout for people in our community to invite to be part of Top City 2025. Take extra buttons, give them to them. Imagine how we're going to reach them, how we're going to help them care about local elections and understand how it impacts them. Imagine how to help them be informed, registered voters, and remind them to vote. People respond to their networks. Use your local networks and reach out to make sure Topeka votes this November. Uh, the Top City 25 Challenge helps us all as a community. Uh, in Topeka, we make things happen. In Topeka, we vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to speak on Lou McGinnis, property owner of nearly 85 percent of all properties in Topeka. I'm here because I see the injustices that he has going on in our community. He is a predator, and is well-known by his actions. He has people scared and worried, many of whom are elderly, such as myself. And they, or we, do not have the means to fight back. If they can rewrite the rules on redistricting, surely you can eliminate him by amending some legislation that removes this predator from doing business in our community. I spoke with Tom Shine, News Director of KMUW in Wichita. It's a radio station, I believe. When I first heard of Lou trying to purchase the property we live in, I made a contact with him. And you can go to kmuw.org and review their article about the atrocities he has caused in their city. He has done the same in other cities and states as well. He has been banned, barred, et cetera, from doing business there. So his team of powerful litigators somehow wasn't able to beat their system. He has systematically taken over our community, and we have allowed that. Is our system broken? If you live in one of those complexes, what would your tolerance level be? I'd like to know what can be done, as I've been here before, attempting to speak for those who can't speak for themselves. At this time, at that time, a city official, perhaps it was code enforcement, pulled me to the side as we left to discuss the matter. Wasn't nothing done. I'm here to see what can be done. Due to temperatures of late, I have not been able to secure enough signatures to support from those who reside at our apartment complex. But yet, we know that many has approached the management regarding their disapproval if a sale was made. If given a good amount of time, I'm sure I can and will secure enough signatures that will matter, and from other complexes as well. And I'd like to add that you're the city government, backed and supported by the Constitution. This man has broken laws, rules. We have to put the brakes on this now. So I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the Governing Body. This will be short. I hope you all read the letter I mailed to you, since I only got one reply back from you, and I know this is all old news, and you don't want to hear it, but I think you should. Um, I am not only a resident of Topeka, but I'm someone that's deeply frustrated by the direction the conversation has taken around the proposed Maverick, Maverick Convenience store. At your last meeting, we heard strong opposition from some West Hills residents. I respect their concerns, but many of the claims shared were exaggerated and unbalanced, and they don't reflect the needs of the broader Topeka community. For example, fears about truck traffic having spiraled out of control. That night, we heard it would be 600 semis a day that would be on Fairlon. I mean, I don't think it takes a lot of common sense to figure out, you're all smarter than that, to know there's not going to be, I mean, Maverick would have loved that. They'd be selling a lot of diesel that they're not allowed to sell. Uh, and now it's up to 2,000, a semi's a day. The numbers don't, you know, they're just not even credible. The truth is, trucks already travel that corridor. There's two stations across the street where they can, not very convenient, but they can get diesel. There's trucks all the way up and down Fairlon, delivering merchandise, delivering food, delivering everything that semis carry. And, uh, the traffic still flows. Maverick was proposing a clean, modern, well-managed store with diesel pumps and top-rated food. Let's also remember, truck drivers are professional. They stop, their stops are brief, they refuel, they grab a meal, and they go. Claims about noise from jake brakes doesn't hold up either. These trucks won't be barreling downhill, they'll be slowing to exit. Some speaker said truck activity might endanger kids walking to Landon Middle School. I think that was one of the things tonight that, uh, how many kids do you know that walk to school? Right. That was years past. That concern, it's emotionally compelling, but it doesn't reflect the reality on the ground. And yes, someone even said, oh, I love this one. Noise, the noise from the trucks would traumatize the fish in the pond near the governor's mansion. I think that speaks for itself. What's truly frustrating is seeing a well-thought-out project, which had already received prior approval, sent back because of those few loud voices. Thank you for your time. You folks made a mistake.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor and Governing Body, for allowing me to speak to you tonight. Uh, my name's Doug Rosenkutter. I've owned, owned and proudly owned and operated Doug's Service Center at 601 Fairlon for 32 years. I'm here tonight because I've invested my life savings and decades of hard work into my business. Change can be hard, but it's especially hard when it threatens this ability and future of what I've built. That said, I want to be clear, I did support this project. Maverick was not asking for tax breaks or abatements, as most other companies that request coming into Topeka do. They're offering, they were offering to pay for improvements and benefit, to benefit everyone. Widening the street, upgrading the entrances, adding traffic light at 7th and Fairlon, these aren't handouts. These, they're infrastructure upgrades that will support all nearby businesses. Some have voiced concern about a traffic with too many signals in a short stretch. I ask you to look at 29th and Fairlon. There's many more there, and well-sinked, and work great. I do want to express my personal frustration as I approach retirement, the potential sale of my property was, is being directly impacted. If this project does not move forward, which we heard tonight it did not, um, and the adjacent lot is sold, the motel property is sold without mine being sold to the same purchaser, it will be, I will be left with the right-in and right-out driveway of, from my entrance to my business. That would make it nearly impossible for me to continue operations or sell my business. It's also worth noting that owner of the Amoco Station across the street has raised concerns about the median traffic flow. Yet, he already has two entrances and exits, one from 6th Street and one from Fairlon. He also owns nearby land and may expand his business. Will we apply the same scrutiny if that happens? There's talk of that a convenience store could hurt property values. I'd urge the opposite. Leaving this land vacant and overgrown would do far more harm. The crime that I get at my business is atrocious. I have to repair everybody's vehicle that gets broken into at my expense, and it happens The, um, Maverick would have been a very professionally-built and operated facility to, and produce jobs for the, for the community. Finally, I've heard concerns about stores' proximity to the school, yet no one seems to mention the Home Six, formerly Motel Six, that is located right next door to the school, that has a far greater concern to me for kids than a well-lit business. Benefits clearly outweigh the negatives. The surrounding neighborhoods should be ashamed at the way they treated the Maverick Company with their accusations. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Um, I wanted to address a couple, um, things that were, um, in the news over the last week, or, um, said regarding, uh, community safety. Um, one was the PACT article, the Policing Community Together, um, article that came out about the initiative through TPD. Um, very much realized in that article that maybe that definition didn't mean the same thing to me as it did, um, to, uh, TPD. However, we did learn that, um, there was a 10 percent reduction in crime in that period of time, um, with a, with the huge highlight on the number of arrests that were made, um, during that community engagement. Um, but what that proves to me, what that's saying, is that officers are able to perform their assigned duties far more efficiently, not with an increase in staffing or an increase in budget, rather with more intentional initiatives and more accountability with their time. Um, arresting people is a Band-Aid approach and not a solution. Recently, at the Mayor and City Manager Press Conference, it was asked about the solutions to the violent crime in Topeka, and the response that was given was really disheartening, or also the response that wasn't given. It was stated that there are very, that we don't know real solutions, um, that there's no two homicides or violent crimes that are alike, and that we don't know what people are experiencing. But the facts are clear. The mounds of research, the data, the outcomes that we have show that when we address the root causes of violence, we reduce the crime. These are what we call the social determinants of health, and I feel like we need to define what root causes are, what the social determinants of health are, again. Um, which social determinants of health are conditions in where we live, we work, we play, that influence our overall health and well-being. These factors are shaped by the distribution of money, power, and resources. So community violence is both a consequence and a determinant of health inequity. So we know we need primary, um, responses, which those would be prevention. We need secondary, meaning things that happen immediately after a violent crime occurs, and we need tertiary, the more long-term approaches to addressing it. We know there's not one thing. Um, the research at Vera Institute suggests that every dollar spent on a program called Advanced Peace, very much a CVI program that was done in Sacramento, saved between $18 to $41 across all emergency response, healthcare, law enforcement, and the legal system. So I'll say that again, for every dollar spent on a CVI program, on a prevention program of intervention, addressing social determinants of health factors within the community, for every dollar had an $18 to $41 return in the end. So we know these upstream approaches, addressing the needs of people in the community, these are the ways that we make real impact and lasting change, not Band-Aid approaches. So we need to focus our investment on redirecting to these types of strategies, so that we have a very comprehensive approach, um, to our community. So I will go ahead and plug that there actually Block Talks and the TPD have been partnering, um, to actually coming up next week for, um, community meetings that are going to be talking about ways that communities see, um, what community policing is to them, which would be very appropriate to also bring in those mental health questions. So we already see collaboration is occurring. They have three scheduled meetings in our community with flyers with both logos on them, so that's very positive. So I urge you to look at that one considering.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Doug said it all. The people in this room ruined Doug's life tonight. That's terrible. When is, when are we going to start standing up for the Dugs, the small-business guys? Now, there's some things that can be done in this room right now that doesn't take an election. I'm talking to the majority of the JETO members right now. JETO, you get a dead stare sometimes from people when you even say JETO. What is JETO? So I'm talking to, uh, the majority of the JETO voters, and I'm asking you for your help, the existing JETO members, because what I want to know, and I'm going to make a court request for it, I want to know the members of GoToPika that voted for the nine-and-a-half million dollars to go to Cody Foster for the AT&amp;T Building. Because the AT&amp;T Building, I'm telling you, it's going to be the biggest boondoggle we've ever done in Topeka. Your losses are going to be much bigger than the hotel. So when you consider that about $3 million in rent is going to be paid from GoToPika, so you've got a non-government, uh, entity taking our sales tax money, and they're paying rent to the, uh, owner of the AT&amp;T Building. So then, they, on top of that, they get a, almost a $7 million construction allowance for infrastructure. That's our sales tax dollars just going to enrich that building. And what's really cool about this whole thing for the guy that owns the building, he can sell that building tomorrow and make a huge profit, and the sales tax, our sales tax paid for it all. Now, that sales tax originally was to go for, uh, to grow the, uh, tax base, to broaden the tax base, and increase the population. So really, right there, that's enough to say, well, you know something? It didn't grow the tax base, and, uh, we haven't grown the population, so let's just stop that project. And in the famous words of Bill McCormick, he goes, Henry, that's just going to turn into a slush fund. And besides all the charity that they gave money that, that GoToPika uses, I can't go to the board meeting. I can't go to the board meeting of GoToPika. And here- I can't go to the board meeting of Go Topeka and hear how they're going to spend our tax dollars. And on top of that, I can't get a straight answer for who voted for it. So, I mean, it's all done in secret. This community ruined, and how is Maverick ever going to come back to this community? That's a great guy. Doug says to me, he goes, well, they're not going to sue you, they would win in, with Taco Bell and the Golden Factor, they would win the lawsuit easily. But why would they want to come to this community when we don't even welcome them? We'll never get a Whataburger, a second Whataburger deal in this community? We've got to start doing things differently. We need to change the way we treat small businesses. It's all for the elites. It's all done in secret, and it's not fair. We've got to start treating people different. The Go Topeka bought land from me almost 22 years ago, and it sits vacant.
That's the last person signed up for public comment. We do have announcements, but we also have two executive sessions that we have scheduled for tonight. City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, before you move on to public comment, the staff requested executive session can be bumped. It's nothing crucial, so just wanted to put that out there for discussion.
Do we would just have a executive session?
Yes, sir, a. Yeah. Staff, staff requests will be moved to next week.
Well, the public's had its opportunity to, to listen to our meetings, and we can go through the announcements, and then, I think, then we'll take a break before we go into an executive session. Okay? So, we'll start with announcements. Madam Clerk?
On the August 19th meeting, we will have one certificate of recognition for the Mamba Socrates team. We have two board appointments. We have an expenditure ordinance on the consent agenda. Action items include an ordinance and resolution for combined utility revenue bonds. We have an ordinance from Washburn Tech North Campus for a PUD request at 2240 Northwest Tyler Street. We have an ordinance, two ordinances from Weed Zero LLC. The first is for annexation, the second one's for a planned unit development at 4100 Southwest 40th Street. Resolution from Scent Inc. for reinvestment housing incentive district application. And then, on action items include the 2024 Uniform Mechanical Code, and the 2026 Social Service Grants Scoring and Funding allocations, continued discussion on the budget, and then the fire discussion for the optimization of the fire station.
Okay, thank you. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Just really quickly, I wanted to acknowledge Ryan Freeman, our outgoing planning and development director. Tonight's our last meeting, and Friday's our last day. Just want to say thank you for having, giving me the opportunity to work with you, and know that you'll be missed here. I appreciate everything. The other thing that I wanted to highlight, our Office of Accusative Communities, Monique Glade and her team, last couple weekends, they've had some pretty amazing events. Couple weeks ago, we did a backpack giveaway, and had some good volunteers go out there. Have to ident, or I have to acknowledge our corporate sponsors, Walmart, Grace Med, and I believe United Healthcare, really supplying a majority of the funds for that. And so, just want to say thank you to everybody who participated, and again, to all the school kids, have a good school year. And then, this past Saturday, Monique's team took the lead on hosting the city's, the city's first hosting of the National Night Out. I think it was a great event, had a lot of activities, not just a touch of truck, but car show and talent, talent show, and we have a lot of talent here in Topeka, so it was very, it was fun. And again, for those of you who came out, and for the community who came out, appreciate y'all. But again, all the kudos to Monique and her team. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Councilman Dobler?
Nothing, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Duncan?
Just two quick things. I just, the city's National Night Out was a great event, was glad to be able to go to that. I went to several others that held them, so I just want to thank all those folks for having me, but they all put on really great events, and so I made it to as many as I could, but couldn't get to them all, but thank you to all the community groups that also put those on. And then, just, everyone knows, but everyone's going back to school this week, tomorrow and Thursday, so, not that we shouldn't do this all the time, but there are lots of kids who walk to school, so be careful. You know, follow the, follow the school zones, slow down, don't rush through those crosswalks, and just know that there will be a lot more kids walking in the morning and afternoons to and from school. So, thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Hoover?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Councilwoman Hiller?
I had, just some catch-up on events, I won't repeat the others. We had a really great meeting at the invitation of the new Downtown Topeka Inc. staff with the complete police leadership in terms of downtown safety and so on. I really appreciate that, that's going to continue. Mayor was there as well. National Night Out, I didn't get to the big event, but I had three of the 10 neighborhood events, and so, I was really proud to see that continue, and I hope we can, can start working back toward our 60-plus numbers that we used to have. I find them very invaluable, not just valuable, but invaluable in, in our neighborhoods. We have coming up soon, some other events. Oh, I wanted to give First United Methodist, who wasn't on the list, but has been doing events for the street people, as well as the people near downtown for some time, and they do a really great job, and they followed the Night Out events on the 10th. A Raisin in the Sun is being produced at the Beacon Theater this coming weekend and the weekend after that. Got those right? Yeah. Darren Kennedy, local, local guy made good from Topeka High, directing, so that information's easily available on social media. This Sunday, the Shawnee County Historical Society is doing an event, a walkthrough of the Colored Women's Club in, in the Tennessee Town neighborhood at 1149 Lincoln. Easy to find that on social media as well. Back to Tennessee Town, though, I think Sister Lassiter is still here, and the Neighborhood Night Out event for Tennessee Town, they got moved because of the weather to the Boys and Girls Club, who was wonderful at hosting it, was the annual basketball tournament, and that entire gym and building were packed. It was a tremendous tournament, and I don't know the exact age range, but probably everything for about 8 to 30 age range on the players. It was really fun to see. And last but not least, mark your calendars for the evening of Saturday, the 23rd of August, which is our, I think, sixth annual Get Down in T-Town, that Topeka United is sponsoring. That's it.
Councilwoman Valdivia Akala?
Thank you. Nothing other than we need to keep working hard and work harder with the lumiginis issue. It's just, it's beyond insane. And also, do we have to do it 10:00 PM?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to get to. Yeah. Councilwoman Ortiz?
I'm good, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Banks?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to reflect a little bit on the conversation we were having with the fire department. Juvenile fire setters are throughout the city, and I think that as the governing body, we should be focusing on being able to provide a fire setter with some help if they need it. We do, we're not prepared right now, so maybe we can have some conversation, City Manager, about what we can do to make sure that we can provide those services if we need them. I know it's going to come. Thank you, Ms. Ray.
Deputy Bier?
I'm going to kind of piggyback on what Councilman Duncan said. School starts, the biggest thing I see is parking lots, school parking lots, people fly in and out of them. It's not just the school zone, they just fly around the parking lot, so please be safe. And it's just not right before school, right after school, when, when the flashing lights for the school zone, it's after practice you have kids walking home also. So, another thing, volunteer. Volunteers, before school, there's programs, during school, you can volunteer, after school, there's, there's schools and organizations you can step up and help out with. And then, the big thing is for the teachers. Sign up to be a sub. Teachers have a hard time getting days off for medical, family emergencies, required training, because there's no subs around. Kansas, a couple years ago, lowered the requirement to be a substitute, just to have a high school diploma and be able to pass the background check. It's, it's a paid job to be a substitute teacher, so if you're looking for a job, you can set your own hours, you can set what school you work at. This, it's an amazing job, I did it when I was in college, did it when I worked second shift jobs, because to me, it's a fun job to have. So, looking to get in your substitute license and help out teachers that, you know, they have time off that they get, just like everyone else gets, but they're not allowed to use a lot of times anymore because they don't have the subs to do it, or teachers have to go start covering classrooms, so they're working a full day of stuff, and then they have to take all their classroom work home with them, and now they're doing more work at home. And lastly, thank you for everyone that stayed tonight, that's, public comment, you know, we, the mayor made a great decision on having the Maverick discussion first, but this was a very long meeting, I think it's the longest, most voting items we had ever, so thank you for everyone that stayed tonight.
Councilman Miller?
Nothing, let's get to it.
Thank you. Well, some of you already touched on some of the things I was going to talk about, about the National Night Out, and, and the, the great turnout for the backpack thing, the Walmart sponsorship. But, like City Manager said, I think I would like to acknowledge myself, Rayanna Friedman, who has been a real gem, as far as I'm concerned, in our department and for the city. She's been very responsive, she reaches out to the council members as quickly as she can whenever they have a question or some clarification that needs to happen. She's been good at updating us on projects that we still have working, so on my part, I'd like to give her a round of applause for her service with the city. Thank you. So, we have nine minutes to decide if we're going to break the 10 o'clock rule and go beyond that as necessary, so there is going to be a need for us to have at least one executive session. So, there is a need for us to extend beyond 10 o'clock. I will make a motion. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Second from Councilman Miller? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. We will take, though, and thank you for your indulgence, a 10-minute break before we go into executive session. So, we are recessed for that 10 minutes. Okay, we're back from our recess. There is a need to have one executive session. If the city attorney will read, please.
The motion will be to recess into executive session for a time not to exceed 45 minutes to discuss personnel matters involving one or more individual employees as allowed under KSA 7543-19B1. The open meeting will resume in this room of the city council chambers.
Okay, you've heard the need for an executive session. Is there a motion to go in, to session, motion to go into session by Christine, Councilwoman Christina Valdivia Akala, second, and by Councilwoman Ortiz? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are adjourned into executive session.
What was the time again?
All right, we have had our discussions during our executive session. No action has been taken, no further business comes before this body, the meeting is adjourned.